Microphone.
I hereby call to order the meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, July 20th, 2022. Sherry, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Interim Vice Chair Trent is absent. Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Starkweather.
Here.
Thank you all, and a pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Starkweather, would you lead us? Oh, did you do it last night?
Carefully.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. I looked at the minutes from the last meeting and I thought... Overcome with patriotism. Okay, first item on the agenda is selection of a planning commission chairperson and vice-chairperson. And Sherry, I think you run the first one, don't you?
Do we have any nominations for chair?
Yeah, chair and vice-chair.
Any other nominations? We'll close the nominations, we'll take a motion to elect Chair Quilisi as chair. A second? Bennett. Roll call. Quilisi?
Sure. If elected, I will serve.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Take a nomination for vice-chair.
We have an interim vice-chair right now.
I have no problem with that, but he's not here, so I don't know if that makes any difference.
We could just leave that for another meeting when we're all here.
That would be fine. I do think someone who's been on the board for more than two meetings like us would be...
Exactly right.
May I suggest as an option that we elect him, subject to his willingness to do it and not kick you. That way we've got him.
Go ahead, make the motion.
I make a motion...
Might I also add some information into this? I spoke with Mr. Trent earlier today, or actually via email, and he's identified that he is not interested in vice-chair.
Jamie?
I would nominate Jamie to be the vice-chair.
And I'll second that nomination.
You have to pay attention.
Any second nomination? Nominations are closed. We need a motion for...
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Chair Quilisi?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Bennett now, I guess.
Vice-chair to be?
Yes.
And Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
We can move Commissioner Bennett over, or Vice Chair Bennett over now.
You can slide over if you like, but when the audience gets really restive, this is where the lightning strikes, so be careful. All right, next on the agenda is public communications. The time set aside during this meeting for people to speak on issues of city business that are not on the agenda. So if you're here for Love Social, not yet. Anyone in the building or in the waiting room who wishes to speak?
No raised hands.
Mr. Daddy? Give us your three minutes, sir.
I'm not going to need that long. It's apparent after we've been 100 years as a city that we have a disaster of our Title X zoning and land use codes. And I see that there is a possible discussion on tonight's agenda, excuse me, sometime in the future. I would urge each one of you planning commissioners to have a discussion with your city council and ask for some priorities. We have a mess here. It doesn't help our planning department, it doesn't help our city, it doesn't help you, and it sure as heck doesn't help anybody in this community to have dysfunctional codes that are hard to read, where if ifs and buts and candy and nuts, but it's Tuesdays and Thursdays. And that's how our codes read. It's dysfunctional, it's not fair to the community. We are not getting the government that this community deserves. And I would urge you to contact your council people. We can do formula stores to figure out who can sell white cotton panties. We can have an emergency meeting on that on Friday, which we did. We can bring up things like putting up fake speed signs on the US highway, the state highway. We can talk about banning Amazon drones that we don't have. But when it comes to protecting the rights of the individuals here and having clearly identified codes, we need to adopt what Florida did. The state of Florida had a law which was really against the counties and the cities and said no code could be written above the average person's ability to understand it. And that certainly isn't true in this community. It's dysfunctional and convoluted. So I would urge you, as our representative in this community, to talk to our city council because they are not only avoiding the subject, but you folks have done a lot of work over the last year and a half, and we have spent an enormous amount of staff time to have a big stack of papers do nothing but gather dust. So please, go a little beyond what you're doing now, and let's get started on this thing. It's not getting easier and it's not getting better. We didn't have all these people here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak during public communications? All right, we will move on to the consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the planning commission two weeks back, July 6th. Did any commissioners have any refinements to those minutes? If not, love to have a motion to approve them.
I move to approve the July 6th planning commission minutes.
As submitted?
As submitted.
Very good. Any discussion? Sherry, a roll call, please.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Bennett? Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Terrific. Okay, disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. We have two sites in question tonight, 205 North Signal and 202 West Ojai Avenue.
I have had no ex parte communications with either.
Okay. I have been to both sites and have had no ex parte contacts.
I've had no ex parte contacts and I ate lunch today at Love Social.
I went to Love Social for breakfast Monday and Tuesday with my grandchildren who were visiting. And I did introduce myself to Sean, is that his name? One of the owners?
I think so.
And I said I could not discuss the project or be lobbied. But he did have a question about the process, how this was going to go, and I answered it.
It seems fair to me to discuss the process.
Yes, how we would do it tonight and where he could find this agenda item on our website, which is not always easy. Which I do think we ought to maybe put those on the outside of the website when we're having big things. Because people have a hard time finding agendas.
Yeah, it takes a little practice. Yep, okay.
Oh, my mic. Am I not on?
Leave it on and just lean back when you don't want to sound off.
Oh, now I'm on. Okay, can you hear me? You want me to repeat it?
No.
All right. Next item, item three, is a design review permit, DRP 20-004, and a conditional use permit, 20-005, regarding aspects of the AT&amp;T building at 202 West Ojai Avenue. Staff?
Thank you, Chair Quilisi and planning commissioners. On June 15th, the planning commission considered an application for the approval of the DRP and the CUP for the expansion of the existing rooftop mechanical equipment screen for the installation of an unmanned rooftop wireless facility. And during the discussion of the item, the planning commission became aware of a discrepancy in the noise study and continued the item to this meeting in order to give the applicant an opportunity to revise the study and resubmit for review and consideration, as well as get a sample of the color and material for the screen. In revising the study, the commission also... Oh, I just said that. So on July 5th, the applicant submitted materials in response to the request of the commission. And then today, the applicant actually submitted further details. Coming, the conclusion, though, is the same results, and that is that the ultimate noise level is below the city of Ojai municipal code limit. And in the information that came in today was emailed to the planning commission, and it included not the rooftop existing DBA, but the existing DBA in the area, the surrounding area at specific points, and that's included in the information you got this afternoon. The map that was submitted that's within the study is clearer and indicates the expanded cell coverage better than what you received previously, and of course, we have the correct location now. And here's the color sample and material. And if you'd like me to walk it over or pass it down, please let me know, and I will do that. And I believe, would you like to have it down there?
I think we all saw it just before the meeting.
Dana White?
This is the screening around the mechanical equipment on top of the building designed to match the rest of the building.
Right, and the screening is existing. The request is to expand it, the height and the square footage. And we should have Chris Dohini in the waiting room if you have questions for the applicant, and I'm sure the applicant's going to wish to speak after you have questions of me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff? I have to say, I do have a question for the applicant, but the maps make it very clear why they needed to expand the coverage for cell traffic. And the other, the noise maps made it clear where the problems might be, and it's all within a half a block of the building, so... And even that's below the limits. Any other questions for staff?
No.
All right, well, if we have the applicant with us, let's bring the applicant in. Mr. Dohini, I think it is. Yeah, right. Famous surfing spot.
Hi, good evening. Yes, Chris Dohini from Smart Link, and it's a common question I get asked. Appreciate your having me again this evening, and again, I want to go back and apologize for the... corrections on the previous noise study as far as the images that were provided, the site plan, as well as the acoustic images, and allowing us to, you know, submit a new report that was accurate and productive in any case. Again, I did get a quick response from our vendor in providing the FRP sample that Mora has, and also the propagation maps have been updated to show the coverage and also included a more defined map so that you could see the coverage and how it applied to the local area and the streets. There were some questions before about how far east and whether we would cover certain areas, and I wanted to make sure we provided that.
Yep. Any questions for the applicant?
I've got one. Is the sandwich material that we have here with a hard surface on each side and foam in the middle, what the screen will be made of, will it look like that when it gets constructed?
It will look like that, but again, it will be textured and painted to match the existing structure. They can apply, you know, texture over it to match the style of the building, and it's not going to have any issues with blocking coverage.
But I would assume that the foam will also tend to dampen sound, which is what my question is about.
Sound, but not the RF?
That's correct. Yeah, it will assist in dampening sound as well.
Whoa, who's that? Any other questions? I had one. Looking at the noise chart that you showed, I'm wondering, what are the proposed noise-producing elements? Is it air conditioning, or is it those, what they call thermal management units, it looks like big fans? And do the antennas make a lot of heat?
No, they don't produce a lot of heat that you would even notice in the vicinity. I mean, they do produce heat, yes, but not to a level that's...
Just wondering, because you've got big fans proposed, and that tells me you've got to move some air. And the usual reason is that you get localized heating and you want to spread that out.
Yeah, and the fans that are included in the cabinetry that's provided are to keep those, help assist in keeping those cabinets cool, because they do generate some heat as well. So that's where primarily the noise is generated from.
So you have the RF producing and receiving, transmitting and receiving equipment up there inside the equipment shelter, if you will, and then wave guides to the antennas or something like that?
Yeah, the antennas sit separately from the cabinetry. They sit standalone, mounted on pole mounts, inside the equipment enclosure, lease-based enclosure. So they stand it independently, and then the cabinets will sit inside that area.
Okay. You have a question? Please go ahead.
On the letter that we received today, on page two, there is a worst-case predicted operational noise level at nearest property. And I don't quite understand that chart. It indicates to me that the existing noise level is at a 53, and that the project noise level is 46 and 39, and that the total combined noise level is still at 53.
Nighttime noise... Oh.
No, no...
Doesn't exceed... Well, okay.
Okay, it doesn't exceed 55, but the total is 53. And I, you know, forgive me, I don't understand all of this engineering stuff that you sent us. Could you explain that chart to me?
Well, basically, they're pulling information that's provided in the rest of the study. Existing ambient noise level that was determined from the basic traffic study, local community noise level is 53, as it shows on the chart. The project noise level from our study, from the proposed equipment, as stated previously in the study, is 46 to 39. So the total combined noise level, they use a higher noise level of 53, showing it's still below the city level of 55.
39 to 40, it's a logarithmic scale, so 39 to 40...
That's why I don't understand it.
Extremely small compared to 53.
Well, you're basically saying, if I understand it, that that's an ambient noise that's out there, and this other noise is not going to increase it. It's actually going to be less than the ambient noise that's out in the street.
It's not going to change it by more than a dB, for sure.
Yeah, so it won't increase noise, you know, because the level already out there. I guess it's like a busy street, you know, and if you put on something that's at lower level, it's not going to raise the total. That's the way I look at it.
Again, my compliments, sir, on your maps. That made it very clear to me what you're doing and why, so, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
All right, thank you, sir. Hang on, there may be something that comes up if we have any public comments on this.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. But we can open the public hearing then and ask, is there anyone in the building or in the waiting room who wishes to speak on item three? All I've seen is fours here.
We got a new one. Now I gotta write his name down.
I don't need to write my name down.
Good evening.
Daddy, go ahead, sir.
And I guess, Mr. Dohini, this is for you too. Across the street, when Star Market was operating, there was a number of noise complaints on the upper units. And this went on for a number of months. They were having 3 a.m. rooftop DB testing with Brian at the time, and one of our local artists, Bernadette, had a number of complaints. The question gets to be, this is a study, this has got nothing to do with reality. When the maintenance guy in the morning goes to blow the leaves off at 3 o'clock in the morning, I can hear it very easily at my house, okay? So what are you going to do about making sure that once it gets in, it actually does what it's supposed to do? We're going to have some random tests on that over time. And then the other thing is, is AT&amp;T owns a quasi-public-use parking facility on the side street across from Ryan Blatz's office that is hazardous. It is decrepit. It has a huge hole in it. It is in extreme need of repair. And I would hope, before you allow them to do any additions or improvements or anything else, that they have a responsibility to the community for the health and safety to repair the lot they have. It hasn't been repaired in years and years and years. So, that's it. I hope you would condition that. Thank you.
Can I address this to Lucas? Because I brought that up at the last meeting, but I was told it was a separate CUP, so we couldn't include this with this.
For that parcel, I'm sure it's separate.
Yeah, different CUP, so what...
It's a CUP from the 70s, right?
Yeah, yeah, so I brought that. We need to do something about that.
However, there is co-compliance that can start addressing that and look at it from a maintenance standpoint.
So you're going to do that, or co-compliance is going to do it?
I need a submittal in terms of a complaint in order to start that process. Thank you.
Okay.
That's how that process starts.
Sounds like that'll kick off the process.
Can I add to that? I don't know if the building frontage on Ojai Avenue is part of the same CUP as the building and whether that's necessary or not, but the screens that the AT&amp;T building has on it are rusted out and should be painted.
Your microphone, please?
It's right here. As I said, I believe that the screens are rusted out on the building and should be painted as well at the same time if we're having them do necessary maintenance.
Maintenance?
Yeah.
Sure.
I would add one other thing. When the driveway, it's got this cinder block sort of blockage to where their storage stuff is, and that's become a homeless shelter.
You're talking about the parking lot, correct?
It's become a homeless shelter for one person, but it's kind of unsightly. And people may not want to park there, and you know it's public parking, when they see somebody's got all their gear and stuff there, so that maybe that needs to be regulated in some fashion.
Takes a complaint, he said.
Mr. Daddy?
Correct.
Add that to your list?
We do not have a designated area for homeless, therefore we can't go to it.
Right.
Whatever.
Okay.
But to Vice Chair Bennett's point regarding the maintenance for the building itself, yes, that can be addressed either through co-compliance or a specific condition, because it's on the building itself.
Okay. Thank you. Let's do it then. All right, I see no one else who wishes to speak on this subject, so we will close the public hearing and come back to deliberations by the commission. Your thoughts? Commissioner Murphy?
I have no more questions, and I am inclined to approve this. I think that the big white box on top of that building will be a pain, but the fact that we'll have better coverage of cell service is worth it.
Okay. Mr. Bennett?
If you look at the docket, there's one picture in there which shows the building from Ojai Avenue and shows how it blocks the view, and I think a technical...
Blocks the view of the equipment shelter of the mountains?
Blocks the view of the mountains more, that additional three feet. By the way, you know, they're probably doing what they've been asked to do, but it's really the cubic footage, not the square footage that matters in this instance. But if you look at, let me see if I can find it, page here.
Page E3 or 4?
It is page E, and it is now, hold on, it's before that.
Oh, here you are, right there.
There it is. It's page, yes, E3 or 4. And if you look at the, because you've got both before and after on that page, you can see that this box, it demands more of your view and obscures the mountains behind it. And we, I believe, have in our plans, not a rule, but a goal of making buildings so that they will not block our view of the viewshed of the mountains.
I would agree that that's a goal.
And if you look at these two...
I look at both pictures and I see trees. I see trees behind the building.
Yes, you can see trees behind the building.
And those are taller in your view than the equipment box.
Yes, but you see, you're looking at an equipment box which grabs your attention, whereas in the one in the bottom left-hand corner, it's much lower in profile and is not as demanding of your attention. That's... By the way, I'm intending, when we get to a vote on this, to vote in favor of it, but I think we just have to be mindful of this stuff at all times, or we could wind up obscuring the very beauty that people come here to see.
I also object to the color of that, but that apparently, since it was an existing color, we couldn't do anything about it. It would look much better if it matched the building in front of it.
Yes.
It doesn't seem like that would cost them that much to accommodate the city of Ojai, but they don't seem to want to, so...
I'd like to address that point, too. If you look at the building from the front, it's tan. If you look at it from the side, it's white. So they have created a problem for us. Do we go with the tan, or do we go with the white?
Keep in mind, the tan is not their building.
You mean the building that they're on top of?
Right here.
You mean this one here?
Uh-huh, okay. The very south end of the main building?
Mm-hmm, is tan, which...
It looks like it, yeah.
It would have looked better if it was brown. But I don't know, that's not our job to dictate that sort of thing.
Oh, it is.
Well, you know, I don't like it, but you know, I don't know that that would be justifying to turn it down for that reason.
I think it would be better if it were all tan, but I'm...
I think it's a bigger issue. We've been looking at color chips for things like the Alroblar remodeling and other buildings in this neighborhood, and I think we need a color education where we have a full palette of colors and we can see what all the colors are that are there. Because there's not a pure white. This is as close to pure white. Because there's not a pure white. This is as close to pure white as any building.
It's very close to the arcade color. And, and the arches across the street from the arcade.
I think...
But it depends on what's next to something, whether it looks proper. I mean, you can have like a brown building like the here, but if you have a whole bunch of ones that are a little more whitish brown, they look congruent.
Right.
But if it's something that's on top of brown, because you see it from the street and you see it from across the street, it looks like someone has stuck some industrial box or something right on top of our beautiful museum and stuff. That's what it looks like.
If you look at it from the other end, this is on page 2 of 4, it looks like it matches the entire portion of the building, yeah.
But that building could be all brown and it would all match, too.
There you go. We could ask.
Keller Williams looks like a completely different color, and yet this was unsure approved by the planning commission.
I don't know if you can hear me, but this is Chris, the applicant.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to pitch in here and, and I want to just try to ease some thoughts on this is that, now, our goal is to, to blend and, and match the existing architecture, whether it's the existing building or the surrounding buildings. You know, we can follow your guidelines as far as the, the colors, color is. We provided a sample that we perceived to be as close as possible to the existing building. But again, you know, that color issue, I want to be lower, at least, least of your worries. I think, you know, we, we can accommodate that.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that you should do anything. I think we need to do something.
Is this the AT&amp;T building or is this the end of Jim and Rob's? Which one? Moses Cantina? This picture on page 3 of 4?
It's the Keller Williams portion of the Jim and Rob's building, I believe.
Okay, so this, this tan here is an adjacent building. It's not the AT&amp;T building.
That's correct. Yeah, it's in, it's in front of it, if you're looking at it from the street.
Looking at it, at that angle, looking northeast, yes.
This building's on the side of it, but for some reason it was...
It obscures the AT&amp;T building, which is all white.
Well, if you're looking at it from the back, you'd say it's all white. Looking at it from the front, it's brown and then white. So, I, you know, I mean, if they want to do it, fine. I don't think we can dictate that at this point.
Excuse me?
But I prefer it.
Attachment H, page 15 of 79, does have the front of the AT&amp;T building facing Ojai Avenue right on the corner as opposed to the buildings that you were just talking about that are adjacent to the west.
Yes, the, the, I think the point we're trying to make is when...
Yeah, if you look at it, if you look to where you can see the front of the AT&amp;T building, instead of the front of the building next to it.
Yes.
It's very obviously white.
Yeah, we concede that point, but the point we were trying to make is that we want our downtown and the whole reason why we don't do more than two stories is so that people can see the mountains and we want, you know, we want to promote a certain...
35 feet at least, yeah.
Huh? So we're trying to, you know, maybe we don't want to, but to the extent that something looks, you know, more natural, like it's all the same color, it's more attractive, put it that way. When you're walking down the street, you look up and you see a nice brown and then you see this white thing on top of it. It's, it doesn't even have the architectural design of the building in front of it. It's just a square box.
Yep, yep.
And, you know, it's funny, our, our design guidelines, or not design guidelines, but our review thing talks about architecture being not monotonous. This is the definition of monotonous. This is the definition of monotonous architecture. But not that I think we should be deciding what's monotonous or not, because it's a subjective thing, but I'm just, you know.
Okay.
It's just a recommendation to them. They can consider it or not, I would say, because we can't, we can't dictate that. We shouldn't, and we probably would lose in court anyway.
I would go with shouldn't, yeah.
But we can always ask somebody to do something nice to make us look better.
Any other comments here before we come to a conclusion? Then could we have a motion up or down on item 3, please?
I move to proceed with item 3.
Approving the DRP and CUP.
Correct.
Adopt the resolution?
Adopt the resolution. There we go.
There you go.
Thank you.
I second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Cherry, a roll call, please?
Quillisi?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Darkweather?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Dohini. Tell your clients to have at it.
Look at your paint samples.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Good evening.
You, too.
That was 3.
That's the old package.
Your books fall apart.
I'm done with you. Yep. Okay, we'll go on to item 4. That is a director's exemption, 22-013, and a minor conditional use permit, 22-003, regarding the Love Social Cafe at 205 North Signal Street. Maura?
Thank you, Chair Quillisi and Commissioners. This project, as you just stated, is a request for approval of a, well, actually, you didn't state this, I'm sorry. The request to the Community Development Department was a request for approval of a director's exemption and minor conditional use permit for the permanent addition of outdoor garden seating for up to 36 patrons that were... And this seating area was temporarily approved during the COVID indoor dining restrictions. It's an existing restaurant, Love Social Cafe, at 205 North Signal Street. It's in the Village Mixed Use Zone, as is their adjacent, the adjacent neighborhood. In early 2020, the city council adopted an emergency order for temporary use of outdoor dining in response to state and county mandated COVID restriction measures requiring businesses to remain closed, closed, including some indoor, a level of indoor dining for restaurants.
A question?
Yes.
That, that resolution that allowed for outdoor dining, was that outdoor dining or outdoor dining facility on private property or both?
It was both. It was, it was kind of a blanket, outdoor dining on a case-by-case basis for restaurateurs to request for a temporary seating.
Okay.
Basically. So once the executive order was over, staff reached out to businesses encouraging them to apply if they wanted to extend their outdoor dining permits. Six out of 16 businesses in the city indicated that they did not wish to continue with their expanded outdoor dining. And out of the 10 that did want to, four actually applied for the temporary outdoor dining to become permanent. Each one of these is unique and was...
Outdoor dining facilities or outdoor dining?
Both, either.
Okay, some asked for one, some asked for the other, some asked for both?
Well, no, was, some asked for, in, some asked for outdoor dining and some asked for outdoor dining facility approval.
Okay.
Okay. And so each of these was reviewed, evaluated individually, because each situation is unique, whether it's a dining facility or a dining area or outdoor dining area. So, right before the release of this evening's agenda, one of the applicants of the four that we've received withdrew. And they withdrew due to neighborhood, neighbor concerns. And so they withdrew their application. They were one of the four that we're evaluating right now. They were to be on the agenda tonight, but now we just have Love Social Cafe on the agenda tonight.
But we have two more coming?
There are two more being evaluated.
Okay.
The temporary seating for Love Social Cafe is located adjacent to the rear property line that's shared with residential uses. And as I already stated, they are also in the Village Mixed Use Zone. When indoor dining-related COVID restrictions were lifted, the city provided the deadline of June 3 for restaurateurs within the city to submit for a director's exemption for a discretionary review and consider, and consideration by the director for making the COVID-restricted temporary dining, whether it was a facility or dining, just outdoor dining, permanent. In some cases, there was a minor conditional use permit that would be required as well, and this is one of those cases. So on May 16, Love Social Cafe submitted a request for review of the DE or of ADE and minor CUP, again, to be reviewed as a discretionary permit by the director. I want to say a little bit of side history regarding this particular site. There is an existing conditional use permit that was approved by the planning commission in 2014. It was a design review permit and conditional use permit for outdoor dining, serving alcohol, and for non-amplified entertainment, as well as, at the time, there were exterior elevations for, it was a previous restaurant, by the way, but the CUP stays with, with the land, except for some exceptions. The outdoor dining was approved for the existing outdoor patio area that's adjacent to the building, and that was for approximately 34 spaces. And then the indoor dining at the time was approximately 20 spaces. The request for...
26 or 6?
20 interior, 34 exterior. And I'm saying approximate because the plan was a little bit difficult to read. And the resolution for that approval didn't say the specific number, but the plan is approved with it, so you look at the approved plan. The request was approved subject to conditions of approval that included that a temporary use permit would be required for any events that were outside of the, the envelope of the, the existing building and the adjacent patio area. And that the entertainment was restricted to certain hours, which is 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and that the events approved with the TUP would be required, oh, I just said that. So any modifications to that approval needed, would need planning commission approval for any future modifications. So this conditional use permit is associated, or an associated conditions of approval currently remain in place, as I stated. So during the temporary COVID-related outdoor dining period, a couple code compliance calls were received regarding this particular site, and they were due, I believe, to amplification of entertainment that was outside. So pursuant to the applicability section of the code for design review and conditional use permits, the director is empowered to process these requests. However, he's also able to refer them to the planning commission on a case-by-case basis. And in this case, the main reason for referring this to the planning commission is due to the area of this dining, which is in the garden area, that it's adjacent to sensitive uses which are residential. And so, since they're immediately adjacent, we're referring this to you. The approval for the temporary dining was a solution to the COVID-related indoor dining restrictions. And now that the restrictions have been lifted, the director finds that the dining area negatively, is negatively impactful due to its location. Staff recognizes this restaurant, as well as others, have been negatively impacted significantly during COVID. And this temporary outdoor dining area was to serve as a temporary seating during the COVID restrictions. Sorry, I keep saying the same thing over and over again. It feels awkward to do that, but that's what it is. So, because of the code compliance violations and because of concerns of the adjacent properties, staff is recommending that the temporary garden area for dining no longer, no longer continue and be reverted back to a garden area, which is what it was previously, and that the restaurant have the patio area for outdoor dining facility and the indoor dining as previously approved with a conditional use permit and design review permit in 2014.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, please go ahead.
I'm confused. In 2014, the planning commission approved a CUP which included a patio which is identical to the patio which we then had, we approved them to do temporarily. Did the CUP...
No, please, I'm sorry.
The patio on the front, on the front of the building?
No, I'm sorry. If you look at page 1 of 1 and the attachment E, there's a patio back there, and I, I sat back there and had lunch today, as I said, and it's identical. This is what you, this is, this was passed in 20, the date on is 2015, but I believe it was 2014 in text. So this whole thing was created then, approved then, and I don't understand why it had to be re-approved. Did the CUP disappear between 2014 and 2000 in that six-year period of time?
Can you tell me which attachment you're looking at?
Excuse me?
Attachment E, 1 of 1.
I'm looking at page 1 of 1. It is sheet A1.
Okay, that's attachment E. It says right above, okay. So that is, so this is the approval for the COVID-related dining. It's the, there's two, there's a garden area at the back of the parking.
So this is not the 2014?
This is COVID-relating approval, COVID-related approval for the temporary. This is not the, this is not what was approved with the CUP in 2014.
If you go back there and look at those things, they weren't built in the last two years. They were built 10 or 15 years ago.
I don't know, the drawing has the date of...
Well, she just said there was a garden back there, but it wasn't seating.
The garden, the garden has, has lovely seating right now, but it's just seating on top of gravel.
That's what it was, I believe, in 2015, when this drawing was created.
Well, obviously it wasn't approved. This drawing was created in 2019, or, sorry, 2020, when I was working with Sean Mason on this.
Ah, that's why I'm confused.
So that, that's the important thing to note. I noticed, I noticed that the date on this is showing 2015. They were using an old plan, because at that time, I think it's important for this committee to understand this, these businesses were going through a significant change because of COVID. And we were looking at any way to reduce any sort of costs. And so we were looking at old plans, where like just throw something together that shows us the numbers.
I just wish somebody had put a date on that and initial...
Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't want you to think that there was something that was approved in 2015, because that was not the case. Instead, they took an old plan, threw together some seating in that garden area, and we looked at it and said, that's good, because clearly, the state counties coming in, shutting down the indoor, significantly reducing through regulations the, the seating that could be allowed. So we looked at it and said, where else can you put this on a temporary basis? And they said, shoot, we've got this area in the back.
You, you've just clarified it for me, everything, and that is this thing that says 2015 was created in 2020.
Well, actually, what you did was take the original plan and you just used a magic marker over the top of it.
Yes, the applicant did that and it was...
Like marker gate.
It was totally, it was a totally appropriate...
There are several examples, I want to say, probably out of the 16, maybe 15 out of the 16, we're doing the exact same thing. We were not looking for professional plans. We were looking for something that was consistent, that we could turn to and say, this, this is enough information for us to say yes to. And when I say 16 businesses, it was really 21 that I met with, but only 16 ended up going through with this. And then obviously, we're down to the last three.
I have another question, if I, if I...
Please.
Next to this lot, to the right of it in, in this drawing, as you're looking at the facade of the, of the building, there's a dirt lot which is used for parking and was about half-full when I was there. Is that part of this business and this ownership? There's a sign there, and I couldn't read it, sort of beginning to peel, but it said "No So Vita" on it. So I figured I was in the right zone.
It's between both of them, so it looked like it applied to both lots.
Yes, exactly.
People are parking in there as though it's there.
The property owner owns both of those sites.
I see. But it's not officially part of the CUP. It's just an informal parking lot that they've created, okay?
Yeah, well, it's not paved. I mean, so...
That's true, that is true.
It's informal. So the only formal parking are the, are the spaces that are delineated on this.
The eight spaces, and they were approved in 2014, yes.
And that was, that was because the only parking requirements that exist are for inside seating.
Right.
So they've got eight spaces for ten inside seats.
Got it. Ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Your honor? VMU, when was that approved for this area? How long's that been in the extent?
About 2004.
Yeah, I mean, it, it came around during that major code update in 2004.
So it's been there a long time, 20 years. Okay, just wondered. The acoustical requirement, that's still in place. In other words, you can't use amplified sound, speaking or music. Is that correct? Okay.
Without
And there hasn't been any violation since the one in October, I take it.
I believe they've asked for amplification in this application, is that correct?
Not in this application, it isn't.
I've, I've seen in, in these documents, both unamplified and amplified.
So that's not being requested in this?
I'm, I'm sorry, one question.
Amplification is not being requested?
Amplification is not being requested tonight as part of this application. Tonight, the application is for the seating, for the seating in the garden area.
But the existing CUP is non-amplification?
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any other businesses in the downtown area that are permitted to do outside amplification?
Yes.
Who?
There's, well, I know of one, because I looked at it today, and that is Hip Vegan has an approval from their conditional use permit to have amplified and non-amplified music.
I see.
And however, whether it's amplified or non-amplified, it has to meet the limits of the code.
Sound, sound limits for neighbors. Okay, okay.
Oh.
Sorry. Has there been any sound testing, noise level testing at this site at all?
There hasn't been. There's been two complaints that I know of, and there has not been, no one has gone out and done a test during those times.
October 3rd was, was the second complaint.
But I'm talking about the neighbors when this, this site here, nobody's tried to test whether their voices are
No.
That's correct.
Not that I know of.
Now, are they allowed, because my visit to that area all the time, looks like it's closed down in the afternoon at a certain point, are they allowed to have lights and activity there at night?
Well, they're allowed
At this outside site, at the, the one that they're wanting extended?
The temporary, the temporary use permit allows for them to have the outdoor dining in the garden area in, at night, yes. There, we didn't, the, the condition, or the temporary use permit didn't restrict their hours to be any different than the restaurant hours.
Okay.
And it was for, it would include lighting and non-amplified music?
Non-amplified music, yes. And you know what, I have to look into the lighting.
I don't think that site has any, well, I don't know if they're supposed to have any music out there, are they?
Right.
Unless they can have non-amplified, oh, I'm sorry. Well, there's two different questions going on, and I can answer the second one. And then I'll hand it back to Lucas, and the second one was about the non-amplified music, and that's correct. The existing conditional use permit says that there can be non-amplified, I don't know that it specifically says music, but entertainment on the patio and indoor building only.
Yeah, not in the back area.
The existing, the existing adjacent patio.
So if they had lights, I don't think they do, do they?
And that was very specific. I'm gonna let
Right, so the, what we noticed is, we put conditions in these, in these temporary use permits that were issued for the outdoor dining, and those, those conditions specified no outdoor lighting. And tip, and what we were noticing is that with, with each of these, it was the creep of, of tivoli lights going in in certain locations.
What kind of lights?
The little string lights that you see, right, with the little
But they don't have any, do they?
No, not that I know of, for this site.
So they don't have a permit for lights, so the only thing that could happen, people could go out there in the dark if there's some kind of event and sit out there and have a drink or whatever. But, you know, from what I can tell, that's never used at night, but maybe it is. Okay, I'm just trying to be, okay, let's see, I have one other question. So before this became a seating area, it was a garden of some sort?
That's correct.
Okay. And this temporary permit that they apply for, they can apply for, for some event?
Already granted the temporary permit, that was during COVID.
No, no, this is another temporary permit. Temporary permit for an event. Apparently, they could apply for, for an event permit.
The previous conditional use permit and design review permit, that resolution states that if they, that they can, they can request a temporary use permit, and that it would be for the existing building and adjacent patio.
Oh, that's all? Okay, that's not what I thought I heard. So they could, but don't they already have that permit, essentially?
Well, it would be for special events. I mean, it's some, something, something that was beyond what the conditional use permit already permits.
But since they've got thirty seedings, which they would fill up, I would assume if it's gonna be larger, it would be spilling outside of the, that small little area.
Well, it might not be about numbers, it might be about hours or about amplification or something, something beyond.
So they couldn't have an event that spills into the parking lot or
No, it was very specific that it not spill into the parking lot.
Okay, okay, just wanna clarify that. Sorry, thanks.
Okay. Ms. Murphy?
I'm okay.
Mr. Bennett, more questions for staff? Okay. I have some things to say when we get to deliberations. In that case, let's open the public hearing, and I have a number of speaker cards here.
Go from the applicant first?
Oh, that's a good idea. Is the applicant here? Yes, that should lead off the public hearing.
And they don't have a time limit, or at least not.
That's correct, yes. The, the rest of, of the public hearing will be limiting each person to three minutes. You're not under that limit, sir. Ma'am.
Well, maybe, yeah, I'll just open it up. Well, hi.
Hi.
Thanks for doing what you do, because I wouldn't want to be doing what you're doing. I'm really great at what I do, you know? I appreciate this time to be able to have a certain level of attention to detail as we go through all of this. And just to start out by humanizing, our whole brand is love is greater than everything. So it's not like we're coming in here with swords and Vikings backing us up, these are literally our community members. I wanted to open the dialogue, and of course, Sean will take over, more presencing the importance of this conversation. And we're definitely not here in this part to speak about technicality. We won't win in that, in that regard. Where we're mostly speaking from is the heart of small business and the changes that have, are going to continue to impede what it is that we're dealing with from COVID, and the godsend it's been with the work that you guys have done, getting us that temporary use, which we would have, quite frankly, gone after anyway, but the circumstances allowed us to really do a proof of concept over the last two and a half years. So for me, you know, not to say what I'm about to say to get an applause or an award, but I was born in the Ojai Hospital, thank you, in 1986.
Nineteen what?
Eighty-six. Geez, you know, I, one of the last babies. But I say that, coming from this community, my heart is literally built inside of what it is that we are. I grew up in a restaurateur family, they owned Bonnie Lou's. I never had a choice but to be good at cleaning toilets and addressing complaints, for the most part. And what I found is I was actually really good at law and administration, became a paralegal, and met my attorney-husband, who dragged me back into the restaurant business. So, that being said, what it is that we're standing for is something that has mediation, facilitation. I measure what I'm out to do inside of this community by the impact. If we're harming somebody and there's impact, we want to be responsible for the impact, but we don't want the impact of, in a smaller amount, to impact what we are creating and the livelihood of our business and what we're up to. So I want to leave it with that, that I appreciate your time and your attention, and, and I do have to say this one thing. It was my fault, I made a call of, for the most part, in our amplified events, which we weren't necessarily discussing here, was to do things, do things like the Ojai Seniors Poetry Society and acoustic music. These weren't rock and roll concerts, it was an opportunity to be able to hear at the corner of the patio, and we did get our decibel measure out to make sure that we were all within code. But I did have some drag queens come on that particular evening, and I realized that they speak a little bit louder than our patrons that we're used to, and that was a terrible, really, that was my fault, and I deserved the warning that we received, and the police that we called on the person we upset who walked by, who was very offended, which I now understand, so I did that. But I want you to know that I won't do that again, and I didn't ever. I never did that again. But that's it.
We've got nothing against that.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm gonna sit down, because it'll be weird, we'll make, I'll just stand.
Okay, I need more support. So if I tracked what was said, the only two complaints that, that were, that were formally made were about the evening events that we shouldn't have been having, because we were not permitted to have that, but that we had. One of them was this drag
Well, it's amplified, we're permitted for entertainment.
Right, but not, yeah, not, right, for not the amplified sound, but the two complaints that were lodged with the city were about that, having nothing to do with the garden seating. In reading the report, and then had the conversation that we had on Wednesday, and I, and if I get the number, but it was said that there were three or four neighbors that had concerns about the garden seating. But the only specific issue was about a barking dog. So
Do you have a dog in the garden?
No, 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 it was the other way around. The neighbor who's on the back has a dog, and, and my point in raising that is in the two, a little over two years that we've been back there. Actually, let me preface this for a moment and say, go back to 2014. When we were here before, and I don't know if it was the planning commission or the city council, when our CUP was approved then, we were told verbally, so I don't know that this is, this was in writing, because we'd asked about, because we had, you know, that back garden area, and we know that Monte Grappa had wanted to use it, they had a bocci ball court back there, they had picnic tables back there, they even had a fence that they took down to create some more privacy. They never went through with using it, my understanding is because they served wine, and the, the ABC would not give them a permit to serve wine back there, so they ended up not doing any of that. So there was this back garden area that we hadn't intended to use first, because it was not part of our CUP, but we asked if we wanted to in the future, use that, because we had ideas, kind of like we do now, to use that. They said, great, come, apply for a temporary use permit, we'll try it out, and if it works, then we'll consider a conditional use permit, and if it doesn't work, then, you know, then you sort of, you have your answer. So COVID, the, you know, not to say that there was a benefit out of COVID, but one of the upsides out of COVID, like that Ventura has seen and Santa Barbara have seen in closing down their main streets, is that we got to use that. And we have two years of actual experience using it. We've never heard one complaint about what's happening in the garden. We have had the one or two about the amplified sound, which, even though I think that was in our application, but it's not being considered tonight, so we're okay setting that aside. So we'd never heard, so, so when we had the conversation on Wednesday, it was a surprise to us about the complaint, because it was the first that we had heard of it. And as Felicia said, I mean, you know, we're Love Social Cafe, we're about creating an environment where people experience and express love. So if that had been brought to our attention, we would have welcomed the opportunity to, to work it out, to see, is there a way that we could make it work so that the dog, you know, or whatever the, the concern was, was being addressed. And I know in our conversation with Lucas and Mora, we talked about, can you move that? And, you know, it's kind of heavily weighted on one side, if you look at the drawing, you can move it to the other side, but there's no shading there, so now we gotta deal with shading. So you could shift it, but still, the property line goes to that point, so I'm not sure that that would fully satisfy the, the neighbor with just moving it. What we would love is the opportunity, whether it's, you know, through mediation or something facilitated with our neighbor, because we have had issues in the past that have created a bit of tension, so just the, the three of us, or the four of us, sitting down and having that conversation, I'm not confident how well that might go, but if we had somebody facilitating it, it would be great just to have the opportunity to discuss and find out what is the, the main issue. Because while we're open from eight to two, we have really no intention at this point of doing anything, maybe we want to extend our hours to four or five at some point, but it's unlikely that we would ever have nighttime events, because we know if we strung lights there or put any amplified sound there, that definitely would, would violate the, at least the, the sound, the decibel, because it's likely would, you know, it would be louder. So we don't want to disturb their quiet enjoyment of their property. But we would love the opportunity, because we don't, could we put a sound wall up? Could we put plants to mitigate it? Could we put a, a water feature back there that would create enough ambient sound that the dog would not be, I, we don't know. We even thought, gosh, we'd pay to have the dog trained, because dogs can be trained not to, and you'd have a better dog at the end of it, right? So, you know, we just want the opportunity, we just want the opportunity to exhaust, you know, maybe we get to a conference, end to a conversation, and, and we finally, there is nothing. But it would be great to get to that, having done the work, to find out, is there a way that we can appease it? And we're only open from eight to two, and rarely is anybody out there at, from eight to nine. It's, it's usually like the nine to eleven, and, you know, we're getting to the summer, and it's too hot, and
The weekend.
Yeah, and, and when it's, when it's mostly used, isn't during the week, it's really during, on the weekend, when we do have the opportunity to have, you know, more people than the patio might satisfy. So it is really the weekend. So anyway, we, we welcome the opportunity, like, you know, whatever's happening with Libby Bowl, and I know that's a sound issue, but I understand that, you know, they've lowered the, how late it can go. So there are opportunities, I think, to, to do that kind of work, and, and so primarily, we're here asking for you to let us do that, and then, and then once we have that conversation, then we come back and we've got a solution, you know, that the neighbors are happy with, and we're happy with, and we'll appease the community. So that's the, that's what I have to say. Yeah.
Please, can, may I?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. And I just wanted to speak to, in the event that this didn't go through, here's what we found, and we have different reports, but we didn't bring all that stuff, we thought this was really more a conversation to be like, that's what we want to do. If we didn't, there's, there's a different climate for our patrons than ever before that we've seen, Monday through Thursday versus Friday through Sunday, taking on this huge uplift in traffic that the community is standing for, bringing in this traffic, that's how we're all surviving. I'm, you know, I'm of course pro-small business, but I'm very much pro the old ways of doing thing. My mother still tells me, is it Wednesday? I'm closed today, and I'm, you know, please, like, she grew up in Huntington Beach, you know, born in Kansas City, all right. So, so my point being, Friday through Sunday, without the use of the garden, where we're making the most of our money for the entirety of the week, we wouldn't be able to seat these people. And this is mostly our tourism. So they, they'll wait in line, you put ninety degrees out, and they drop off like flies going somewhere else. The, the damage it would do to lose this area that has now been part of the new way of doing business, people don't want to sit inside, we have a handful of tables and only, mostly our own friends sit in there with us, so everyone's sitting outside, and that, it's a whole new way. It's just not the way that it used to be, and I would really think that's necessary to have it be as part of the consideration.
Because even going back to the way it was originally before, before COVID, we had the seats packed inside, we had twenty people, twenty people won't sit inside anymore. And we had, what, thirty-six allowed on the outside, and the way it's configured, people don't want to sit that close together anymore, so it's like this new normal, and how do we then accommodate that so that people feel safe going out to a restaurant? And we just have this beautiful garden area. I mean, it's just, if it's not used for that, what else does it get used, so it's just wasted? Anyway, so that, do you get the point? We just want the opportunity to see if we can find a solution.
Stick with us.
Is this the time that we would ask them questions?
Questions for the applicants, yes.
Can they be questions about possible mitigation, or that would break the later?
We don't want to get into deliberation here. If you have clarifying questions for the applicants, it's appropriate at this time.
Okay, I have one question, and then I have a question for Lucas, but I don't know if this is the time to do it, I guess wait till the end.
Either one, doesn't matter.
Um, there's a, I can't even find where you wrote, or whoever wrote this, wrote it. There's a, I can't even find where you wrote, or whoever wrote this, wrote it, the report. But there was some mention about safety concern of people walking across this parking lot. Of course, you know, think about Vons, I guess that, they would abolish that parking lot if that were true. But I don't want to, I don't want to get into deliberation. But do you have a- Do you have any, any, do you have any actual response to yours that you've thought about how you might be able to mitigate any danger issues? There are kids out there, because I, they, I was out there with three kids in the, in that area with their parents. So anyway, just, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, we definitely thought about that. So one is, the first thing to note, after a little over two years, how many incidences have we had of cars backing into kids or pedestrians? Zero. So we've had no incidences whatsoever. So in terms of having a use case, I mean, that's, that's something, right? That doesn't initially guarantee for the future, but it does say that that risk, while real, is fairly minimal. Because if you look at the parking lot, the pedestrians don't, people who walk out there don't walk necessarily through the middle of the parking lot. They walk the edge. So one of the things that we could do to create it safer is to actually make a painted walkway where it's clear, just like with the handicap, our handicap lots, the fir, that space is the first one. And the, you'll see on the original CUP, the handicap person has to go across the very front of the driveway, which is likely the most dangerous because cars are pulling in and it's easy not to see. And so we could create that kind of a system that would allow, make it very clear that this is where to walk so that people don't initially wander out further into the parking lot where it may be a little bit more risky.
That was my thought when I was there, actually, when I read that issue. Lucas, the issue of, they brought up mediation, I guess you'd call it. Is that something that we've ever referred anybody to? Do we have any service that does that for local business or anything?
We don't have that service, but we do encourage our applicants to talk to their neighbors. But as far, I mean, whether it's for outdoor dining, outdoor dining facilities or second-story additions on a single-family home, we always encourage that. And we don't provide the mediation, though.
Okay. Or refer them to anybody?
No, it's a, would be a civil matter.
That would be picking winners and losers among the mediators.
Right. But I would also just identify that the city staff has certainly been involved when residents are meeting with business owners. That is, we've found success in that in the past. And certainly could see that in the future as well.
Yeah, that's great.
So that would be a, that would be a public meeting that-
So you could invite the-
Not necessarily.
You could invite the neighbor or ask them if they would like to meet with the, with the owners and with staff to see if they could work things out. You could do that or have done that?
Have I done that in the past? Yes.
Okay. So, okay, this could be done here if needed.
If it's the will of the commission.
Okay.
Mr. Bennett? I have no questions.
No questions.
Ma'am?
I will wait until our discussion.
Okay. I did have a couple of things. First of all, I'd like some clarification about the amplification issue. If I understood you correctly, you have never had amplified entertainment other than on the patio that's at the front of the building?
Correct. And that's the only place where we're intending to have it anyway. So yes, the only place. And just so you know, the speakers, the ones that we shouldn't have had, but we had, faced away from our back and out into the street where there's, you know, Wells Fargo and an office building.
The office building, yes, okay.
And I don't know about that, I mean, I'm not aware of that first complaint because the October 3rd was the drag queen bingo night, and yes, that was-
They're very loud.
And the complaint, I don't know, is, was as much about the sound as much as that the police were called, which I think the neighbor thought was called on us because of the sound. We're the ones that called the police because there was a woman walking by who was intoxicated. I mean, it was, and was being very loud and very vocal. And we had to call the police in order to have that taken care of. So that's why the police were called, not particularly because of the amplification of the sound. We've had other open mic nights. We've never received a complaint about our open mic nights. And I do have a decibel reader. And so I sometimes would go out into the garden and put my back to the fence and have the decibel reader. I don't, I'm forgetting now exactly what the decibel level is that's allowed, but I never went above that.
55 before 10 o'clock and 45 after.
Yeah, so it never went above 55. Okay.
Oh, he's, he's-
Let's, let's-
Okay. So, so while we're sensitive to that, right, we'll turn down the speakers. I mean, we'll, we'll do, I mean, because it is helpful to have amplified sound when you're doing an open mic night. But again, there are ways, I think, to mitigate that so that when the sound hits that fence, it's not violating what the code says that we're allowed to do. And our open mic nights go till, I think, nine has been the latest, and often it ends around 8:30 or nine. So we're not going, even going to 10 o'clock, which theoretically, we're allowed to have entertainment, unamplified sound until 10 o'clock, but we're not even doing that.
So that's not before us, though?
That's not part of the request tonight, as I understand it.
Right, which is why I wanted to separate that.
Separate question. I thought I heard you say your hours were eight to two.
Yes, our food, our restaurant is open eight to two. We have, I mean, we're allowed to go till 10. We've, but we're not a nighttime, well, we do want to do some nighttime food things. So we might go later at night, given what we're allowed to do. But currently, our hours have only been eight to two. And as it affects the garden, we would likely not exceed that time in that particular area. But on the patio, yes, we are considering opening up our hours a longer to maximize-
As we did before.
Yeah, as we wore before.
We used to serve dinner.
What hours do you currently observe in the garden area?
Eight to two.
Okay. And your immediate intention is not to change that?
Well, depending on what your decision is, but yeah, no, no, we're not-
If you get to use the garden area, I think you use it within the parameters that the city would use for any other restaurant.
Yeah, eight to two right now is the only, is the timeframe that we're, that we would like.
But if they don't have lights, doesn't seem like very appropriate to be having food out there.
Well, not, certainly not during the winter. You're going to put food in your ear instead of your mouth.
But I mean, you can't even see out there. That would not make sense.
They actually have some weird stuff about eating dinner in the dark.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that would be appropriate.
But, but in the summertime, the evening hours can be a lot more enticing than between, say, noon and six.
Yeah, that's true.
But you're not using it right now that way. Okay? I am a little concerned about the amplified entertainment. I would have thought after the first warning that if, if you got a second complaint, you should have known better at that point.
Yes. Did we get that? I don't know that we received, the first warning-
There was something, I don't remember whether it was August or September, but then the second one was October 3rd.
Yeah, that was, that was the one, that was the drag queen bingo night. We have stopped that because that did end up being louder than even we were comfortable with.
And, and you talked about open mic nights. That kind of implies you're using amplification for the entertainment.
A lot of the time, it's just acoustic with, I don't know what else to call it, but a lot of the time, this isn't like concert status stuff.
I mean, if there's a microphone, you're amplifying-
Yeah.
Whatever's going into the microphone.
Yes, yeah.
And there was a, well, I guess what I was saying, and there was a handful of times where we didn't actually have a mic. They were just speaking, but we still called it a speakeasy or a-
It's just the term of art for an event.
Okay, okay. Open mic doesn't mean there's really a microphone-
Doesn't have to.
Operating.
Yeah, I suppose we, I mean, just given what our current conditional use permit, we could do entertainment out there like that without amplification.
Right.
I mean, that is something that-
That was the whole premise.
Poetry and acoustic guitars.
Correct.
Sounds fine.
Since you're on that subject, can I address that for just a second?
Sure, go ahead.
It seems to me, and I've been on that space, that it would be easy to have a-
We're, we're supposed to be- To move your- We're supposed to be clarifying-
I know. It would be easy to move your furniture around and have someone in the center without a mic because, I don't know, personally, I'd have a problem with acoustic. I don't want walking down the street and being, hearing, you know, music or other stuff. So I think it's much more pleasant to walk down the street and hear people talking or giving a thing that it's not blaring out as you're going by, that's all. But, you know, if you could accommodate that, I think, and it would, you know, I'd be more favorably opposed to it.
One might say, can you accommodate that?
Yeah, can you accommodate that?
I'm thinking back to a case that we had some months, maybe a year ago now, the Rancho Inn, where they wanted more entertainment outside. They wanted amplified entertainment. And we required that there be decibel meters at the boundaries of the property because the neighbors were complaining. Now, that was very clearly more amplification, I think, than we're talking about here. But we did require that as a condition of approval of the expansion of their bar area, having movie nights, whatever. And-
I think at that hearing, we came to the conclusion that it was best measured by decibels as opposed to using the words amplified or unamplified because of the ambiguity around-
Well, the real goal, the real goal was to stay under the decibel levels, not how you got there.
Right. And we've heard it discussed also on, no, I take it back, that was in the county with Camp.
Yeah, Camp Rama, they had supposedly, they claimed that their mic was calibrated so the kids couldn't go any higher than this amount. Of course, that's in the middle of the camp.
Might I just step, step in here? We're asking questions of the applicant at this point.
That's right.
Not, not in deliberation. And plus, there are, I'm sure there are plenty of people that want to comment on this tonight, so.
You're right.
Any more, any more questions at the moment for the applicants? We may ask you to come back up to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then, we have a number of speaker cards here. And I'll take them in the order they were given to me. First is Bill Miley. Oh, we've run out of green and we're back into the blue ones.
For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I have a couple of points here I'd like to present. And I've taken them from, most of it, several of them from the municipal code. I think it's important that when you make a decision, that you include these so that in the future, when other situations happen where there's a residence and a business with a common property line, that this becomes a precedent, an important precedent. Because we want, we want the community to be quiet, respectful, but we also want it to be fun and the people enjoy themselves. So the first point I have is, is the need for buffering between differing functions. And you probably know this. This is Title 10, Planning and Zoning, Land Use 10. And this is a quote, A, "require that adequate buffering and transitions be provided between dissimilar uses," which we have here. "And where a question of compatibility exists, require the new use to conform to the lower intensity." Now, I heard one of the owners speak about a sound wall. That sounds like a good idea. And the issue of zoning, our noise ordinance sets standards for maximum sound use, which you've referred to. And you already know this, so I just make a public point here, that residential max is 55 decibels between 7 and 10, 7 a.m., 10. And the VMU is the same. And from my, doing a little research, the average conversation is 60 decibels, five above 55. So that's where maybe the sound wall might come in. And then the third thing is, there's a need for monitoring the sound, not just relying on complaints because the sound may not be there when the officer shows up. So it would seem that now that sound decibel meters have memories, digital memories, and they can be downloaded, and they can be operated over time, it would seem that to establish a decibel protocol for all businesses in places where there's a question of sound problems so that the sound problems never occur. And these folks, I think, want to cooperate on that. So those are my points. Buffering's on, that the decibel issues, and it's pretty low, actually. And then monitoring on an ongoing basis so that everybody gets the facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next up, Louis Scott Bicennis?
Brennis.
Brennis?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission, it is such an honor to be here today. First time, you know, I hang out on the 500 acres on the ranch. And today, I put on a suit and tie and left the horse aside and came down here to support some very good friends, members of the staff as well. Love what you do. It's really hard work. I'm an attorney for 25 years. The largest case I've handled is a $200 million litigation case against LA Solar with a wonderful team of individuals. I now work in giving money away and endowments. That's my primary work that I do, aside from avocados. I realize that people love avocados, but they hate lawyers. So I kind of do that a little bit more. Also served as a member of the Historic Planning Commission in the County of Orange. So I wanted to tell you that I've been watching staff and the Planning Commission, and I love the way that you're bringing together your wisdom, your input, your guidance, your love for Ojai. Thank you very much. I'm not here to provide any legal advice. I have to say that nor represent any party here. But just to mention my love for the city of Ojai, that I'm a new plant here. The beautiful Pink Moment and Love Cafe. In particular, I'm here to tell you that they have the best breakfast burritos. And I put in my notes here that my family and I spent easily $300 to $500 per day on burritos. My wife said, I think you made an error. It's a month, because that would be a lot of burritos in one day. I just have a couple of questions and comments, perhaps either approve or table. You have a new vice chairman with a lot of questions, and that would be sufficient enough to just table the situation. You have the issue of the 2014 that you need to really look for and look at because there may be some vague and ambiguities there that could create a problem. Love Cafe is about love, as was mentioned. Love is greater than Vikings and sword was saying, was said. But we know that the pen sometimes is more mightier than the sword. These people are all about love. It's about Love Cafe. Your job is amazing to balance out individuals within a community, to figure out how you can find the best solution in this situation. And I'm really comforted to know that you're doing that. An individual mentioned in the public communication that mentioned the word mess. I don't see a mess here. I see real people loving this community and desiring to support businesses and support their neighbors. This community is, in fact, about that one word, love. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Medea Brennis?
Good evening. My name is Medea Ann Brennis, and I am the wife of Louis Brennis that just spoke. First, I want to say that I want to thank you for allowing me to speak as an Ojai resident and as a paying patron to numerous local businesses- and as a paying patron to numerous local businesses, including Love Social Cafe. I love Ojai, and I love to support the family-owned businesses here in Ojai in any way I can, whether it's going and buying some lemons from someone off the street, or actually going to an actual business. That to say, my family and I love Social Cafe and the beautiful peaceful garden area that they have that allows us to come together as a family on Sunday mornings and just have memories, create memories with one another, and enjoy the beautiful atmosphere that they've created. I'm here to voice that I would love to see if there is a way that this community and you guys can come up with some type of compromise to keep the garden for us to enjoy our breakfast burritos and avocado toast. And like I said, my three girls and husband and I love to see the garden remain open and the nostalgic atmosphere that Ojai brings. Of course, this is all written out, but what I wanted to say as I was sitting here and you guys keep talking about COVID, which is kind of interesting because, you know, COVID, as you guys know, was something that none of us expected to happen, and it really hurt a lot of businesses, and a lot of businesses did go out of business because of COVID. COVID changes daily, it is not over. And I know that this was open temporarily for them to be able to allow us, as patrons, to come and enjoy still eating out, still getting together with friends and family. Like I said, every day it changes, and so tomorrow we might have to wear masks again, the next day we might have to go back to outdoor eating only. So I don't see why you guys are even suggesting that they close down their beautiful garden cafe because COVID is still here, unfortunately, and we never know what tomorrow will bring. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. John Merk. Last from the past. For those who don't know John, he was on the Planning Commission himself for 22 years.
But he needs no introduction. Good evening, Commissioners. I first wanted to make the point, as Ms. Brennan just said, COVID's not over, and I think it's very short-sighted to, at this point, say, "Oh, we need to go back to the way things were." I don't know that we're ever going to go back to the previous state of businesses, and I think it's very important that we leave the flexibility open for businesses to take what steps they need to do to be able to accommodate people so that we can gather outside. One of the, there's very few places in the city now where you can actually meet and talk to people. And the patio at the Love Cafe is one of those, it's sort of taken over after the Cafe Emporium closed. It's one of the few places you can just call somebody and say, "Let's go meet at the Love Cafe." And you can meet outside, you can sit, there's plenty of fresh air, and it's it's a huge benefit to the city, and I think it would be really a shame to have that taken away. Another point I wanted to make was about the VMU zone. There's been a lot of discussion about it. It actually was originally started in 1995, I think, and then the current map was was put in place in 2004, but when you look at these properties that are surrounding here, they're all in the VMU zone, and it's a double-edged sword in a lot of ways for property owners. It allows you a lot of flexibility into what you can do with your property, but it also allows that flexibility for your neighbors. So it's not really like being in a residential neighborhood where you can say, "Oh, my neighbor's really bothering me with all this noise." You're in the VMU, and it's, there are going to be commercial uses there as well as residential. And I just wanted to say, we seem to live in an era where we're dominated by the tyranny of the minority, and I think it would be really a shame to, I think you have a chance here to really make a decision that will benefit the majority of people and not really accommodate just certain minorities, few individuals who are taking objection to something. So I strongly urge you to allow Love Cafe to keep their patio. Thank you.
Thank you, John. James Calieri, okay, C-A-L-I-R-I, yep, okay.
Hello. I'm a patron at the coffee shop, daily, daily user. And I guess one of my questions here is, you've talked a lot about the sound, you guys have talked a lot about sound, about sound levels, but as far as I've understood, there's been no complaints about sound in the garden, isn't that right? The complaints are that people's dogs are barking at the fence. I mean, I have a dog, and it barks at my fence. I don't think that's the neighbor's fault. So I'm just sort of wondering what it is that is, what is the actual complaint? Could that be explained? What's, like, what's the, is the complaint the dog's, is that it?
As each question comes in, we'll answer it as, as everybody's done with the comment period. So we're taking your question in, and we'll respond afterwards, yes.
Okay, well, that's my statement. I'm just wondering what the big picture actual problem is. Because the area, if you've been there, you guys have been there, it's made of all materials that absorb sound, the gravel, the greenery, and it's pretty open, there's not a lot of walls for sound to be bouncing around. So sound isn't the problem, as far as I understand. Okay, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Diane Kelly?
I want to-
You can pull the mic down, yep.
Is this good?
Great.
Well, thank you for letting me speak. I've been there many times, and I just think it's a wonderful place to be. I'm talking, I mean, not just the restaurant, the food is really, really good, but I mean, the outdoor area because everybody's spaced apart really, really well. And I've never heard any noise. You can't, I personally don't hear the people in another table because the tables may be as far as she and I apart. So, but it seems like all you need to do is test the, test the sound. I also noted another comment about the independent seating area. Somehow, I got the impression that one of the complaints is that having the independent seating area away from the indoor or patio creates a problem as if people are kind of unsupervised out there. And and I thought about, what came to mind immediately was Topa Winery. They have a very similar situation. You get your wine or whatever inside, and then you can go out in this very vast space. And I don't know if people behave themselves, but I haven't seen any weird things going on. Of course, I go usually Friday mornings, so maybe, maybe I'm not there during the weird times. But my experience has been that it's very quiet. It's almost like being in nature to be out there. It's the most spacious place in Ojai to eat outdoors. So I think it's a big gift to me and to the community to have it there. And if there are regulations that are going to require it to close, I feel sad about that. And I really hope that the noise issue would be measured before it's assumed that there's going to be a lot of noise or lights or any of those things that bother everybody. So I guess that's it, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Laura Ward?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Laura Ward, and I'm the publisher at the Ojai Valley News. Love Social is owned by longtime locals, still surviving COVID and adapting to all, and adapting to it like all businesses are, just to stay alive. The cafes, cafes are really a tough racket, as anyone who has owned one will tell you. During the pandemic, they spread out, and with COVID still in our lives, the customers expect space. They serve locals and visitors, which is a rare place in our community to have that kind of harmony, and it's worth supporting. My business is across the street at the Ojai Valley News office, and the new seating area is always a quiet place to meet family and colleagues and community members for me. Mr. Seabert has recommended that the Planning Commission take a gamble on how much strain the Love Social Cafe owners can survive. And by recommending you disallow these additional 36 seats, it could easily be a life blow to their business. So why? Well, one reason is the unrelated crime of amplified sound on their main patio, a topic for another day. The violation of their CUP has brought them one warning and no official complaints or violations. To be clear, the amplified music does not take place on the garden extra area seating. Among the piled-on, trumped-up, and other reasons to deny the, to deny the seating is the danger of walking through the parking lot to the garden seating area with coffee. Now, it's true that people walking before coffee can be dangerous. But how does the city plan to protect me when I'm walking with my groceries to my car at Westridge Market or with leftovers to my car at OBC after, might have had a drink, too? I wouldn't be driving, but I'd be carrying those groceries or those leftovers. Maybe it's safe because I've already had coffee at that time, but I don't know. After, another reason given is parking. And saying the word parking in Ojai doesn't actually mean there is a parking problem. My business is across the street, and there is no problem. For me, the most offensive reason came via two emails from Leica Seabert when he mentioned an informal complaint, ones the OVN cannot obtain, from a local next-door neighbor that their dog may be bothered by the presence of people sitting at Love Social Cafe. I have come to understand, without documentation, that the property owner complaining about their own dog is a city council member who lives next door. It seems to me insanity that the council member's dog is afforded more consideration by Mr. Seabert than this longtime business. It's hard to believe that one dog has rights over Love Social's business. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Let's try to keep it down. Larry Steingold?
Thank you. Here's an opportunity for you people to say yes. The party of no is not here. There's nobody here threatening you with referendum, there's nobody here saying $30,000, no, no, no. Let's try to get to yes. Sit down with them, table this thing, put it on the shelf, sit down with them, cut a deal, it's on, how many square feet is this thing? 1,000 feet, 1,000 feet, 1,500, the gravel area? How big is it? That's what this is about. Somebody complains, he has a right to complain. Is he running for office? That's another issue, that's for the voters to take care of. I happen to be a landowner here, and I own a home, and I'm a citizen and a voter. But he has a right to complain, just, I have a right to complain. Okay? But this starts, and this thing blew up. It's like, do I know a guy? I can take this from a little complaint, but we got, now, they're doing their job. They want to go get a permanent cup, whatever it is, and this is what happens. There's an easement, there's a right-of-way, your next door to a house, we have to have 25 feet, it's a VMU. If the houses weren't here, we wouldn't have a village, all this is all very nice. But make a deal, people. I mean, sit down with him, he wants a win, he lives here, he doesn't want to be part of the party of no. He wants to be part of the party of yes, just ask him. He'll tell you. He wants to make Ojai great. He doesn't want no, no, no. Everything is no. Everybody wants reasons, they want excuses. Just come up with an answer, solve the problems already. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Taylor Morgan?
Hi, good evening. I'm a 10-year Ojai resident and a small business owner, although I lost my business to COVID and I'm rebuilding. I just, a couple of weeks ago, was with a friend at Love Social Cafe, and we were sitting out in the back garden on a sunny day, under the trees. Our kids were making art on the chalk wall. I put "art" in quotes because they're not that good. But, but I said to her, like, "I love this, I'm so glad that they did this with this space." And when I found out that they might not be able to continue that, I was so dismayed and haven't heard any reasons that, to me, would justify taking that away from the community. This really, to me, is a quality of life issue because in this small town, there aren't that many places where you can go and meet and sit. And I agree, I echo what's already been said, that you don't hear the people that are nearby. It's pretty civilized. And it just would be such a shame to lose this, and so I really implore the decision-makers here to consider the impact on the quality of life for those of us that live here and do need somewhere to go in the middle of the week to enjoy being together. And I also second that COVID's not over. I really don't want to eat indoors, so please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Tawny Allen?
Oh, that Tawny. I'm that one. My name's Tawny Allen. I'm the founder of Ventura County Business Women. You can imagine that I must stand for women in business that are local. I have over 1,500 members, and hence why I'm here tonight, to support Felicia in what she's, what we're at the topic is, and she happens to be my sister, so I'm emotionally invested. On one hand, I'm kind of actually, I feel very deceived inside of what this meeting is because on one hand, there's people here tonight that have already had a previous conversation with my sister, and right in the beginning of this conversation, it was clearly stated that they were going to vote against us, not anything regarding because of our sound use. It's also great that I am the one that throws the open mics because I am passionate about community and music. So open mic is only once a month.
Just for clarity, the staff is not voting.
Okay, got it. Someone here tonight, we'll just say it that way, who had this conversation with my sister stated that they were going to recommend us, recommend against us using the garden, not because of the sound, actually, in fact, it was because of the notices that got mailed out. I don't know how many notices that is in our radius around our business. But with that being said, several complaints came back. The only complaint that was given was that there was a dog. Well, on our property, our next-door neighbor also happens to be our past general manager, who is also our sister. So we already know that that's not her. We have another woman that's on this side of us who we are acquainted with, don't have very many issues there. And then we have an amazing city council member who is quote-unquote "with this dog." We've already had to have legal action taken against this city council member for his inappropriate behavior with one of our staff members. So on one hand, here we are having an entire conversation about whether we can use a garden based on sound, when that was never the stated case. It was because there were several complaints, which no one can actually name one, other than their dog barking. And we do it once a month. These open mics are once a month from 5:00 to 8:00, and we're just getting started, so it's a small turnout. We're not having huge concerts, we don't make money from it. We have people that are sitting there singing from kids, like, I think we had, what, a 13-year-old? All of my girls sing, I have all Steve's suit. Our community is who's singing, once a month. And if we lose this garden, so there goes the only coffee shop in downtown Ojai that has that large of a space to accommodate without getting people afraid of COVID. And most of that backyard, back garden, is children. So these are where moms are coming so that the kids, like, go look at our chalkboard, it's all children most of the time. People like positivity, and if we lose that garden space, it's not going to be about the sound and how that's impacting, that's like the livelihood of our business. And it's all because of a dog barking. So the fact that, like, if anyone is actually interested in preserving, like, we are invested in Ojai community. We actually are the intention. We are creating a business and a space for what everyone else is saying they actually are standing for when y'all are actually not. Love you.
Thank you. And I have to say, in defense- And I have to say, in defense of the staff, they have a set of rules they have to go by. It's called the Ojai Municipal Code. And so before you start attacking staff members for doing what they're legally required to do, I would suggest that everybody think about whether or not what's legally required is something you want. And if it's not, then you should speak to the people who make the rules. That's the city council. We don't make rules, we just enforce them. The staff doesn't make rules, they enforce them. Okay?
Can I add some to that? The staff's job is to make recommendations to us. So whether we agree with them or don't agree with them, that's their job.
That's their job.
And sometimes it's subjective, to some extent. And we may come up with a different conclusion, but that's their job. They shouldn't be knocked for trying to do their job. I mean, I want them, I'd want any staff person to give me an honest view of what they think, regardless of whether I would agree with it or not.
They offer, they owe us professional judgment and an understanding of the rules that we're all supposed to live by unless there's a very good reason not to do so. All right, next, Catherine Danwar, Danwin? Excuse me.
Donwin, yes.
Donwin.
Hi.
All right.
Add another one to the list. I would like to start by saying I'm also a lifetime resident of this community, as also part of the Ojai Hospital. And our Ojai businesses, sometimes things are, like, really important to me, and I just can't hold it in. But I feel like our Ojai businesses are struggling because of COVID, and not only because the spaces are limited, but as a community, some people might not be ready to eat indoors and be in such close proximity to other people. So to eliminate an outdoor, safe seating space for the community seems rather short-sighted when it could ultimately affect the longevity of the business. We've already lost two kind of staple restaurants in the community. We've lost Cafe Emporium, we've lost the Ojai Casa. To lose another because of a patio approval seems a little unfortunate personally. Also, since the majority of their business, it sounds like, comes on the weekends, towards the end of the week via tourism, there are no tourists here trying to support this. We're community members. But then to take that away when the city seems so, such a priority to include tourism, the least that we can do is maintain some of our local-owned businesses to be available to the locals the rest of the time. And then lastly, to base a complaint on a dog barking of their own dog, which sounds like what this is, if my dog was barking, that would be a me problem, not my neighbor's problem. I would have to handle that if that was bothering me. So I just think that if that's the only complaint, there really seems to be no base and not basis to allow the patio to remain. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mark Sims.
My name's Mark Sims. I'm a four-year resident. I came from Michigan, where I grew up. I was a businessman, I retired, and decided I want to move somewhere warmer. And so I got an RV, and I drove out to California, and I did a search to find out where I wanted to plant roots and spend the rest of my life. And I happened across Ojai and fell in love with this community. And it's because of people like you, who do the hard work of making this community so special, that I chose it. And I really thank you for all the service you provide for this community, and I'm a benefactor now of your hard work. Of all the places that I frequent in town, the Love Social Cafe is my favorite. I have a dog, and my dog and I go there often, and we buy our food and go sit in the garden area where the trees provide shade, especially this time of year. And so it's tranquil, it's cool, my dog relaxes, and I can enjoy my food, and I get on my iPad, and I can keep up with news and email with my family back in the Midwest, and it's lovely. And it would just be a shame if we lost that space. It's really not, for me personally, it's not possible, this time of year anyway, to sit in that patio area. It just gets a little too hot. And the trees in that garden are just lovely and provide a nice place for us to relax. And of everyone who frequents, I think I probably spend more time back in the garden than any single person, and not once do I recall hearing a dog bark. I'm there during the regular business hours between 8:00 and 2:00, when they're open, and never have I heard a dog bark. And I'm guessing it may be because of, you know, when they had the concert or the mic night there. But anyway, I just thought I'd offer that. I sent an email, basically summarizing this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Looks like Aviva Bernat.
Yes.
Oh, all right.
Hi.
Hit it.
I am going to move this down because I was straining to hear, so. Hi, and I did put also MD. I'm really going to reiterate what a few people said, but I want to frame it.
Speak to the commission.
I want to frame it to medical health, and I'm a 30-year physician, and mental health, and I've been a therapist for over 15 years. I moved here three years ago, and, in the fall prior to COVID. And who knew? I thought I was going to be connecting to a community, and then COVID came, and it's been a very interesting time. And when I, if I think about a couple places where I did get to experience some sense of community, besides the mountains and the trees, in that first year, it was at Love Cafe, Social Cafe. And I just want to reiterate what other people said. We're not done with COVID. We want to be done. I am not a doom and gloom. We are going in a better direction. But the reality of needing outdoor space, like everyone said, really is important medically. We know a lot of people in this town, elderly and younger, who've gotten the recent variants, and I hear from a lot of people. And also from a mental health standpoint. We need to maintain the places of community. The separation has been disastrous in, at every age level, and from children to elderly. So, and then I also want to add that the first time I got to have a meal with my best friend, who I hadn't seen in a year because she was immune-comprised, she finally came out when we were vaccinated, our first meal together, after a full, it was more than a year. It was Memorial Weekend last year was there, because she's like, I feel comfortable there, let's go there, we can really be spread apart. So it's a beautiful memory of reconnecting, and so I just wanted to honor that, and thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you, ma'am. Susan.
Clejian.
All right.
Hi, everybody.
You can see I have an unusual name. I try to be careful, but, okay?
Not that unusual. Hi, everybody. I'm Susan Clejian, LCSW. I'm a clinical psychotherapist by day, and I'm a theater professional in every other waking hour that I have, even in my dreams. I have been coming to Ojai since the '70s. I became a resident here since 1995, when I came up and did a Ojai Shakespeare in the park, in the bowl. So what I'd like to say is that, just to piggyback on your last speaker, is the need and necessity. My focus, some of my focus is trauma, stress, anxiety reduction, life adjustment, and I am a specialist in conflict resolution, if you want to take a note of that. You can imagine that my business has quadrupled in the last couple of years. And because of looking at people's acute trauma, acute stress, mental health issues, other things that have been exacerbated, like addiction and alcoholism and family stress and relationship, and all of what COVID brought, I am now, I think, the 20th person to say, having safe space is very important. So we have to look at community need in that way. Love Social provides that. They might not even know that after 2:00, people sometimes use the garden space to have a safe sitting space, because there was no other safe sitting space. And there's another point of why buy a property downtown near a business? I don't know how long this person that's complaining has been there, so forgive me. But if I'm going to be a property owner that lives downtown by businesses, and I know that I'm sensitive to noise, why would I look there? There are so many other opportunities to live in this town rurally, away from that. So I believe that there's a solution, there's something else that's going on. And there's also a deeper issue of being a longtime resident here for 30 years and watching the support of the arts and kind of the freedom that attracted a lot of people to come here as creative people, yet cleaved and shut down. And I'm very passionate about this because it's driving us out. It's driving people like me out that have spent 30 years of my volunteerism and my service, helping this community in arts and education and mental health. And here's a place that these people have provided in a very small way to support that, and yet again, it's being a contentious issue. And I just really beg that we don't have these continuing conversations of another business, another place that provides these services, even come to you to be debated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Steve Jones?
First of all, thank you very much, and I apologize for my outburst earlier. I'm passionate, and I love these guys. First of all, I just wanted to say, separate issues. There is amplification, open-mic night in the main patio right next door to the main building, separate issue. There's a garden area, a complaint about a dog barking, or we're not clear what the complaint is, and we've been talking about noise issues. The city ordinance states that a commercial-zoned business can have 65 dB from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and that's a weighted average, so that's not, so it can vary. You can have spikes of 70 dB for 15 minutes per hour, you could have 75 for 5 minutes per hour, and you can have 80 dB for 1 minute per hour. Residential, which is on the other side of the fence, but I'm not sure because they are zoned the same, residential is 55 from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and I think it goes to 70 dB for 1 minute per hour. So with that, I sat in the garden area this afternoon from 12:30 to 1:30 in the afternoon and took sound readings, and I used a TSI Quest Sound Pro DI Type 2 Data Logging Sound Level Meter, and I use this in my profession. I do construction monitoring to make sure that construction is complying with the Ventura County, and that's what we use to take sound readings. During that time, the average DBD was 54.7, with 60 dB spikes occasionally, a couple of 70 dB spikes, and those certainly weren't over 15 minutes. And I realize that this is an impromptu, other testing and monitoring should, could be done, and it was impromptu. But with those numbers, those sound readings that garden are trending below the city ordinance. And the gentleman earlier did state that voice conversation, 66 to 50 dB, dogs are 80 to 122 dB. So I would suggest if a dog is barking, he's at 80 dB or higher, that's a residential, and I would imagine dogs are barking over 1 minute. So I would propose that the residential dog is out of compliance to the city's sound ordinance in residential, and it's not the responsibility of Love's Cafe. With that, I would urge you to recommend to the city council what Sean suggested, to table this or to extend it, to let them really look at, see if there's significant impacts, and try to mitigate those, mediate those, and talk with the residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And to clarify what we're here for, any decision that the Planning Commission makes tonight is always appealable to the city council. But if it's not appealed to the city council, then our decision is final. It's like levels of courts in the United States. So is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward, identify yourself, and you have 3 minutes to share your thoughts with us.
Hey, I thought I put a little green card there. I must not have. My name's Ava Kaliri.
Did I miss it?
Oh, it doesn't matter.
Okay. Anyways, I work at Love Social Cafe. I have just the dandiest of times working there. And I have to say, whenever someone comes in, they're always like, oh, we have like a party of six. I'll be like, oh, we have a garden out in the back, like, you guys can just hang out there. They're always so excited. They're like, what? Do you guys have a chalkboard and everything? And I used to go there all the time when I was a kid, and then when I started working there, I was like, wait, this wasn't always here? Like, it wasn't, I don't know. It just hadn't occurred to me. But I love the people there, I love the environment, it's all super, just like, it's just love. So I really hope that you guys make a good decision for the community, because you guys are here for the people, you know? You're here to help everyone out, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Come forward, identify yourself, and you have 3 minutes to give us your thoughts, sir.
Hi, guys, I'm Christopher Stevens. I guess I have social anxiety, so I'm usually not good at this. I don't get at the open mic. I worked there starting during COVID. Really just expression, expressing how much emotion to the place, the love, the community, all these people who show up. I'm there every day, about 7:30 to 8:30, maybe 9:00. I power wash there. I make sure I bought a plug-in, battery-operated power washer. It's horrible, doesn't do a good job. Bought a Milwaukee battery-operated weed whacker today, so I can work. But for all the complaints, I can't really say anything. I will, I just want to say the community there and the emotions, it's real. Love is greater than everything, and I stand by Sean and Felicia and, like, the community that do go there pretty much every day. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, then we're going to close the public hearing and come back to deliberations by the commission. Initial thoughts?
Well, I would like to get the yes on this, because I really think it's a very valuable thing. I think having outdoor dining really adds to our community, makes it more vital. And I've actually been there when it was closed, met with people, and had conversations. I guess I trespassed, I don't know. But a couple of people said, hey, let's go over there and meet, because I was downtown, and they, we just sat out there. So, anyway, I was out there two days ago, and I noticed, actually, she said that it was crowded on the weekends. This was pretty crowded that day. There was about 10, 10 to 12 people out there, but it was very quiet. Someone had three kids, and I was surprised how quiet they were, because my kids would never have been that quiet. So I also think it's a mistake to us to be deciding on specific complaints or individual circumstance, but look at the context in which this is set and what would be the likely problems. I would say, one of the people mentioned, they brought a dog out there. Have you ever been to a place with two dogs that don't get along, happen to come in the same place? But that's just life, you know? I don't want to be legalistic about this. Let's try to be practical, what works. So I would say, just some principles. Number one, it's an VMU, so that should give us some context that's designed to be Number one, it's an VMU, so that should give us some context that's designed to be a mix of housing and commercial and so forth, basically downtown. Secondly, to Mr. Miley's point, my good friend, I believe that buffering is a subjective standard on our part. Unfortunately, that was one of the complaints of Mr. Daddy, that we everything is subjective, but it is a subjective standard. And so we have to decide it on the basis of the individual circumstance. And, you know, you could look at this lower intensity thing that required the new use to conform to lower intensity, but a backyard can be quite intense, you know, playing, having parties, you know, playing ball, whatever. So I don't know what that would even mean for a backyard of a residence.
A residential backyard, you're talking about?
Yes, yes. That can be, you know, I mean, no one would tell somebody, your kids can't go out there and play and, you know, play baseball or something, whatever. So anyway, I'm not sure that is really applicable. The second thing is that I would say having a place outdoors where kids can go to is a really useful thing for young parents, having been one and taking kids out to restaurants and having everybody look at me like I'm the worst parent in the world. It's nice to have an outdoor place where you could bring kids and you're not bothering other people that are having conversations. So I think that's a positive. I do think there could potentially be problems walking across that if you're not thinking about it with a cup of coffee because sometimes when I'm drinking a coffee, I'm not looking around. I'm in my thoughts. So I think that's worth looking at. And the hours with no lights, I think, is, you know, that stops at two and there's no lights at the place and there's no amplification. So I have three recommendations, or maybe four, about mitigation, whether this owners would agree to something like this. He already mentioned one, which is a walkway. So down this, right next to the, where the outdoor cafes, where they have the nighttime stuff, if that had a space like, I don't know about that wide, painted so that people would know where they're supposed to walk, then just don't, you know, because kids might just take off running across to it because it is at an angle like that. So if that thing came out, I think that would be something that would help a little bit. I think it would be nice if they, because they say, several people in the letters we got said it was a quiet zone. So why couldn't they have a sign up there, say this is a quiet zone? No talking on cell phones. We have neighbors, something like that. Just alert people. I don't think they would have a problem doing that, and that's what people want anyway. I mean, if I'm out having a conversation quietly with three people, I don't want someone next to me, you know, talking on their cellphone. And people talk on cell phones, they talk very loud. I know my wife complains to me whenever I do that. So I know that's loud. And the final thing, and this is just an idea, they could come up with whatever, the fence is behind it like this, and there's a short, looks like a little trellis kind of thing on the right-hand side. You know, I think if they had a trellis with greenery that went up like eight feet or something like that and went partly around like that, that would be a big block of sound because greenery tends to absorb sound and would also look nice, you know, so the neighbor would see greenery. So anyway, that's, those were my recommendations, and I probably would be favorable to approve it.
Well, as we've discussed earlier, we all have a set of rules we need to go by unless there's a good reason not to. I believe that six feet is the legal limit for a back fence. Is that correct?
It is. And while I have the mic, the...
Been amplified.
It's awesome. In the VMU zone, the noise limit is 55, not 65. 65 in other, perhaps in other commercial zones, but the VMU is 55 max.
55 till 10:00 p.m. and then 45 after that?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so it's a lower limit than in a residential zone, in a purely residential zone?
No, it's consistent with the residential zone.
Okay.
So it's lower than a regular commercial zone or a strictly commercial zone. So the C1 would be up to 65.
Rancho had a higher limit?
Yes.
Than the VMU does?
Yes.
Because that's west side.
So even a six-foot trellis would still, because their fence is six foot, I assume because that's the limit, would still, I think, would have both a sound suppression and give it a green.
Seems to me like, yeah, plantings of some sort along the back fence.
Yes, and the side.
Would cut down on the sound.
So if they have it along the side, because that house is right there, that would block sound going that way. That's the way I would look at it, anyway.
Ms. Murphy?
First of all, like all the people here, I like to eat outside normally. And of course, with COVID, that has just increased my desire to find outdoor places. I am all for extending this permit temporarily. I guess that really wasn't part of the issue facing us tonight, but I like what I'm hearing about how the space is being used. On the other hand, before we start making precedence here, because we have more cases coming up, I would like to have everybody take into account the city ordinances that we have. Mr. Miley mentioned a buffer zone, as did Jeff. While I was looking through the ordinances, I found one that said that it would require that new developments be at an appropriate density or intensity based on compatibility with the existing surrounding area. Even the parking areas for non-residential uses adjoining residential uses shall provide a landscaped buffer yard with a minimum 10-foot width between the parking area and the common property line bordering the residential use. Now, I know that's parking, that's not a restaurant, but I think that the point here is we need a buffer that will satisfy both the owners of the Love Cafe and the residential neighbors. I think that mediating this, there's a mediator over at the school. I mean, they have, mediators are available. I think that we should get to yes, but it might take a little work. So let, I'm in favor of tabling this permanent request, giving them a temporary continuation, if you will, and working on setting up the protocols that we need in the community so that when we bounce against this thing again next month, we'll know what the reasonable protocols should be. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bennett?
We've had a lot of very contentious issues facing us in the past year. I've been on the board about a year now, and we're usually faced in these with a crowd, particularly when it's this size. It's angry, it's hyperbolic. There's a lot of misrepresentation and antagonism, and I haven't sensed that tonight. It's been actually remarkable. The chair, without using the gavel, gavelled you to be quiet and not respond to and cheer, and you did, which was remarkable.
Thank you.
Because I've been at meetings where the chairman has gavelled and it didn't make a damn bit of difference. So this is remarkable, and it's, I would like to think, it gives me a lot of hope because it's a lot more fun doing this job if the people in front of you aren't prejudging what your answer is going to be, but are listening and are presenting and, and it gives us a view into another community. We've seen a lot of communities turn out for events, whether it's the Tipple and Ramble community, and it's a, it's a community with great passion. And the Rancho In community, again, great passion. There are lots of, there are lots of groups and subgroups in this town. And I used to work two blocks from Social Cafe, and I worked there while it was no so vida and noticed the name change and noticed a slight difference in how it was operating. But I admire these communities and think they're an interesting part of where we are. And I think getting the yes is important, and I would urge us to try and get to yes on this. And, but we also have to ultimately make some, we only have to lay down a written record of what we've done and say, okay, here's what we're going to do. And there are going to be some people who are not going to like that. So, you know, we need to perhaps find that not everybody can be our friend in the process. We hope that everybody can be our friend, but we appreciate the number of people who acknowledged that these jobs are hard jobs to do. They're interesting jobs. But I think that whoever said it, and I believe it was the last gentleman we spoke, it's important to divide the issue and understand the components of the issue. I think we need to spend some more time as a community, and maybe it's our job to look at the issue of sound. And maybe dB is not the only measure, but the, breaking it into components and talking about, you know, the occasional backfire of a car is one thing. The continuous sound of a motorcycle, perhaps revving its engine as it warms up may be more irritating than a single backfire by that same motorcycle. So I think we need to become more sophisticated so we can help you all have a discussion where you have a sophisticated vocabulary around which to think about these things. Dogs bark, by the way. We've got, I live in the Upper Ohio, very rural, and we've got several barking dogs. And in the middle of the night, we have howling coyotes. And, you know, I think that we benefit as a community from dogs who occasionally bark. Anyway, my leaning is to want to approve this, perhaps with a review period, to see what issues continue to float up before we lock this thing in. I would recommend a year because I think, you know, doing it in a shorter period of time, you're likely to catch a period of time where either something terrible happened or nothing happened. Whereas if you give it a year, I think we probably could come back and visit it again. I appreciate the work that the staff does on this stuff. And it's tough to catch what the sentiment is on these things when you're trying to read the letters that are coming in. And we're empathetic with the neighbor. We're empathetic with the neighbor who's got a bad neighbor, but it's evident from this that this is not a bad neighbor situation at all. You know, I sat there for two hours today reading this docket or portions of it and could stay concentrated on it.
Blatant for punishment is what it is.
Did you have coffee while you were doing it?
I only wish it only took two hours. I've been working on this docket since it came out, but, but anyway. No, I didn't have coffee, but anyway. I'm leaning towards thinking that we should...
A qualified yes?
A qualified yes with a qualifier being a time to see how it's working out. By the way, the issue of lights, there's nothing that says that these people can't have lights back there. They can't have lights which shine up.
Or onto someone else's property.
Or onto someone else's property. But you certainly can have a light at a table back there. So I don't want that to, you know, leave, have you all leave the room thinking that you've got to bring a flashlight to eat dinner there. But there has been, there has been issues where, because we do try and have dark skies in this community where there's a, where there's a cover at the top of it, so it's not shining up, it's shining down on the food or the face of the person you're with. Anyway, Mr. Chairman, that's my opinion. I'm sticking to it.
Thank you. I did have one question, and this goes back to Mr. Miley's discussion of a buffer and Ms. Murphy's discussion of a buffer. Do you know, do you know the approximate dimensions of this garden area? Is it 10 feet front to back or more than that? Because the discussion about buffer, I think, was really mostly about separating parked cars or moving cars in and out of a parking lot away from a residential area, but I'm not positive. So please clarify that and tell me if you know about how big this area is. This drawing was never meant to be dimensioned and it's not.
Right.
So...
Taking up my mic.
So... Maybe the applicants can tell us.
Yeah, and I'll ask for their clarification. About 1,000 square feet, right, roughly? From the...
25 by 40 or what are we talking about?
From about the fence to the edge of...
Yeah, 30 dB.
Yeah, I was seeing about 25. You're saying about 30? Okay.
30, okay. So 30 by 35 or thereabouts is going to be about right. Okay.
And this backs up right to the back fence, doesn't it? Okay. There's no, if you had a buffer, you'd have to be plants or something.
I'm thinking the garden area itself is a buffer if you're talking about parking. But if you're talking about keeping sound down on the other side of the fence, then plantings of some sort, as has been discussed here, would certainly be a useful solution there. And I know over the past two or three years, Lucas is probably tired of hearing me say this, but my general philosophy is you should be able to do what you want with your own stuff unless it bothers the neighbors. And if it bothers the neighbors, go talk to the neighbors and work it out. And if you can't work it out, then come talk to us because we'll enforce rules as we need to. And I'm concerned with the complaints, and I am looking for some assurances from these applicants that if we extend whatever temporary use permit there is or decide to make something permanent, that it is done without any amplification of the entertainment because that, that's not currently allowed. And if it goes on, then we have a compliance problem that would bother me. And if someone wants to come back and say, we'd like permission to do amplified entertainment for certain hours of the day or the week or whatever, it's worth considering. But right now, that's not on the table, and it shouldn't be on the table. And if there's, if there are additional complaints of that sort, then I would expect to, if you will, be calling the applicants on the carpet here.
Can I come back in?
Yes.
One thing that hasn't been really discussed tonight, but going along with my thought that we should be setting up protocols for how these situations are handled now and in the future, would be the fact that parking has, with the addition of the garden seating, has doubled. And I think that in any mediation or discussion... And I think that in any mediation or discussion of this, we cannot overlook the fact that parking should be addressed. Citizens in this town have screamed regularly that parking is a problem. So let's at least keep it in mind as we give people permission to do things like doubling the size of their restaurant seating.
Can I, if you're jumping back in, Mr. Chairman, may I jump back in?
I'm not through, but go right ahead.
All right. I went today and had never even thought about it, but this place closes at 2:00 in the afternoon. It doesn't serve alcohol. It's not what we've heard about before, where we've had alcohol on late night and as part of, as part of the program they're opening in, in the evening, these other, these other venues that we have dealt with, issued. This is a breakfast and lunch place. It closes and, and, you know, you don't have people there drinking. Boy, you add alcohol to a situation, to a conversation and the, and the DBs go up. This was, I sat there and people were having quiet conversations. And there's more parking than you know what to do with as long as they can keep the lot next door. It's, it's, it's remarkable how much parking there is.
Well, that, that would be part of the discussion for Sean. I mean, he's, he's got more parking available next door if, if he chooses to use it that way. But I have a, a question for Lucas. Right now, the hours are 8 till 2. Is there anything that would prevent him from extending those hours? Or does that come back to us?
The existing conditional use permit allows them to be open till 10:00 P.M.
Till 10:00 at night, so...
So if they wanted to extend their hours today, they could.
I don't think we can consider it as just a breakfast place.
Can I ask something about that, the hours part? So I thought you said that they weren't allowed to have lights back there. Is that true or not?
Lights are not a part of the conditional use permit for, well, first of all, the, the garden area isn't not part of the existing conditional use permit, period.
But we're making it a part of it.
Well, this is, we're talking about a temporary use permit for the garden area. That's what has been in existence, right?
A temporary use permit has...
Aren't they asking to make it permanent?
They are. And this request does not include lights. But if they wanted to have lights back there, we would be looking at that through a conditional use permit.
Okay.
And whether they're tivoli lights or any other lights, and they would be subject to standards.
So they couldn't do it now?
Correct.
Okay. Because I, I agree, both drinking and lights next to someone's house, you know, who knows what kind of rowdy characters would go back there and start making noise and so forth. I think it's a bad idea, that close to someone's backyard, to be having lights and drinking and so forth. So, you know, I would, I would prefer that we don't have lights. And I guess you can't stop people from drinking.
It's not part of the ask right now.
Yes, okay. I just wanted to clarify that, because it sounded like someone was saying we could do it. So right now, we can't.
I'm, I'm just saying that the issue, as it's presented itself in town, has been by, this is pre, tivoli lights, pre-shade, where the light, oh, I'm sorry. This is, the issue as it's presented itself in town has been people who've strung up tivoli lights, which throw light up into the atmosphere and create a glow over the town. And we're trying as a community to be a dark sky community where you can go out and look at the, look at the stars. And so that's the, that's sort of one of, one of the motivators. I mean, there can also be other illumination. But I think what we need to do is have our planning people and the, and the applicant to come up with some solutions to some of these things, like marking out paths, putting in some illumination. If it's going to be used in the evening, they have the right to use it until 10, 10:00 P.M. That is the patio and the, and the restaurant. They want to use the garden, we may want to, you know, have our staff. I think we shouldn't be sitting here coming up with solutions to all this stuff. But we should have our staff and the, and the applicant sitting down trying to figure out what is it that they want to do? And what is it that they can live with which will allow for...
I think your approach makes a whole lot of sense. I would, it would be, also makes sense to bring in the neighbors to get their views and see if the staff, working with applicant, some of the suggestions we made, they may have other ones of how they could make this work and mitigate to whatever extent noise is an issue. Of course, you don't measure noise at the point where it's being made. You measure it at...
The property line.
The property line.
Yes.
And of course, if you had, you know, you can say 60 decibels that we're talking, but 10 feet away, we're not gonna be at 60 decibels, obviously.
Right.
And so, like, the idea, if you had some kind of greenery buffering, I think that would help a lot with, it's all you're having is conversation back there. Seems unlikely that you would be able to hear much. But I don't know. So I think it's worth, I think your idea makes sense, to give the staff an opportunity to work with the applicant and the neighbors and come back with some suggestions. That would be what I would, makes sense to me. I don't know what you think, Chairman.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll continue my remarks if everyone else is, is done for the moment. First, to preface this by saying, I am not and have never been a patron of the Love Social Cafe. Sorry, everybody. But so I feel like I can take a fairly objective view of this whole thing. And I recall Sean speaking at a city council meeting about, about one of the neighbors coming over to complain. And I felt like he was in the right, but that's another day. I would, I would ask the, the applicants, if your, if your hours are 8 to 2, you're allowed to run until 10:00 P.M., but in the winter, it's dark at 5:00. So what do you do? Do you actually have anything going on in the evening that, please come up? I'm, I'm trying to understand how this whole thing works. Now, right here in the middle of the summer, obviously, you know, at 8:00, it's still light enough to walk around and not bump into any parked cars. But what do you do in the wintertime? What have you done in the wintertime?
So there was, in the first year of our existence, which was 2015, there was a three-month period where we experimented, because we were, we started as breakfast, lunch. And then we, for three months, tried the experiment of doing lunch, dinner. And so we had, but that was short-lived. We didn't continue that. It's tough as a restaurant to be able to do three seedings.
Dinner is a very different kind of meal, anyway.
Well, there's, yeah, and it's storage. Our kitchen is very small. If you, if you, if you've heard the rumors about our ticket times, it's because our kitchen is really small. And so to do breakfast, lunch, and dinner for any restaurant's a challenge. So we haven't, we haven't done anything at night since 2015. We do have lighting outside, on the, just on the patio. And in fact, Felicia might want me to say, we earned a dark sky award...
Yes, we did.
Because of our lighting. That being said, but that was also back in, I don't know, 2015.
Well, I just want to point to, the intent, the intention is that we do use the space with just our patio lighting that we have out. That's all dark sky approved. And we do one-off events. That's what we've been doing, so...
And do you get temporary use permits for the one-off events?
No, it's still within the current C...
When you say, when we say event, because I know that that is a distinction...
Oh, I'm sorry, like a dinner.
No, we have dinner. We serve dinner. So we've had...
Ah, okay.
And, I mean, it has been for primarily right now, the open mic nights that we've had that we shouldn't have had.
Well, we, right, but we also did Valentine's Day dinner.
Oh, so we did a Valentine, yeah, where there was no amplified sound. But so, we do want to now do more things in the evening, given what we're allowed to do. But because we haven't been doing it, we've gotta now weave it in. And we're not gonna all of a sudden start being open, you know, seven nights a week. But we're experimenting with certain evening dinnertimes to see if that's something that the community wants. But that would only be on the patio. There's no intention of extending that out and allowing seating in the garden area for the nighttime.
So, so if there were a, if there were a condition on an approval of something tonight that said you're not going to use the garden area for meal service after, say, 5:00 P.M., you would, you would not have a problem with that?
Yeah, absolutely. And just for full disclosure, we are having conversations about being open until maybe 4:00 or 5:00. So it would be great to then also be able to use the garden area for that period of time. But after 5:00, that, we don't have an intention. And if for some reason, at some point in the future, we decided we wanted to do that, we'd obviously have to come back and get a temporary use permit to use that. So, but at this point, yes.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure about that, but hold on just a moment. Currently, under the temporary use permit that exists, are there operating hours limits different from 7:00 A.M. to 10:00 P.M.? Or is that what's allowed? Okay. So they could stay open till 10:00 P.M.?
Yes, they can.
Under the current permit?
Yes.
Okay, okay. My inclination follows those of my colleagues. I think it, I think it is worth an experiment, at least. Call it a pilot program, extension of the temporary use permit for, say, a year. Continue the case so that we don't have to go noticing everyone again a year from now, but have the applicants come back and find out if we have had any more complaints and what was the nature of those complaints, if there were any. And, oh, there was something, there was something in the staff report that talked about, and, and Ms. Murphy talked about, the, the requirement for additional parking. Folks, this is, this is one of the little quirks in our current municipal code. There's a phrase called outdoor dining. And that's people sitting outside a building, eating or drinking, and they're on public property, sidewalks, public right-of-way, whatever. There's another phrase in the municipal code called outdoor dining facility. That is not a facility where outdoor dining exists. It is something else. It is people sitting outside a building, eating or drinking on private property. And right now, as I understand the code, you, you do not have any parking requirements resulting from the use of an outdoor dining facility. And so arguably, that shouldn't be the way it is, but that's the way it is right now. And, and so I, much as I might regret it, I, I can't raise the issue of additional parking if the garden area is used for dining, because it's an outdoor dining facility. It's not outdoor dining. Outdoor dining, I think, does result in a parking requirement. I'm not positive, but I know an outdoor dining facility does not. So, so we can't, we can't put that on this applicant at this time. But I would be very happy to extend the temporary use permit for, say, a year and come back and see if we've had any problems.
But I, I kinda would like to see if we can work out some of these mitigation things we talked about.
And, yes, and we can...
For that time.
Sure.
Right.
Could I speak? Where I, I'm saying you may be trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. And that's why you're, you're trying to mitigate something that doesn't exist at the moment. If you were, if you had been out there today, if we had all been out there today, sitting at tables and eating our sandwiches, it would have, it's, it's hushed. It's, it's a, it's a garden. It's not, it's not like, oh, we need to have buffer walls and all that, for that use now.
It's, well, that's a snapshot, just like, just like when the dog is barking, that's a snapshot.
Right. And that's why I think a year is important, or even maybe longer. Because if dinner works out and they've got in their CUP the ability to go to 10:00 o'clock, maybe they don't want to go to 10, 10:00 o'clock, because, you know...
It's a whole extra shift.
Well, it's a whole, A, it's an extra shift. And also, the, the town really goes to bed at about 8:30. There's nothing, you, you're not gonna sell another meal after 8:00 at night.
Try to get a meal after one of our meetings.
Right, yeah. So I'm not, I'm not worried about that. But, but I could see you wanting to be open to, you know, serving food till 6:30 at night and, and serving wine with it. And all of a sudden, you could wind up with...
Provided that's all in the current permissions. I don't know.
Oh, it is, it is, yeah.
So could I ask the applicants, could I ask the applicants whether the, some of the mitigations that I proposed would be things they would be willing to consider?
Before Commissioners Starkweather, as the applicant, if I could just join in here. If the council's leaning to, the only thing in front of the, sorry, the only thing in front of the commission tonight is the denial resolution. So if the commission is considering an extension of some sort, which was discussed, it would have to come through direction of staff to come back with a resolution of some sort.
Resolution?
Correct, correct. And then in regards, just to preempt or prompt Commissioner Starkweather, the commission is, can't, commission can ask or, you know, request that the applicants attempt to solve, you know, some of the issues that have been mentioned tonight. But we can't, the commission can't impose any conditions as part of a resolution, not, not a resolution, but of...
Not as a part of this resolution, because this is a denial resolution.
Correct. We can't, we can't force mediation, is what I'm saying. We can't impose that as a condition.
So, yeah, I understand that we can't impose conditions, nor can we force mediation. I was just asking if some of those requests, which could be part of coming back, whenever the staff comes back with another resolution, the grounds on which we would extend it for a year, if some of these mitigation things that I mentioned would be things that you would be willing to explore, that's all.
Okay. What do you think about a year?
Well, they've already had two years with a pretty successful run. So another year, I'm fine with that. It doesn't solve my issue of figuring out what our protocols ought to be, but that's an issue for us.
Maybe temporary extensions becomes a part of the protocol.
That could be.
So...
But that's something that when we work on table, not table, chapter 10, that was Mr. Daddy wanted us to go to work on, title 10, thank you.
Lucas and I have labored over that for a long time.
Okay, and...
So I agree with you on that one, because I look, you know, as an attorney who's, used to have to make these kinds of presentations, our standards are so subjective. I'm not even sure that they could be legally enforced, to be honest with you. But now that the state has come down, I know on the housing part, which said you can't have subjective standards.
It'll come out.
The best way to deal with that kind of thing and not get in these kinds of disputes is to have design guidelines that are black and white. And then we're not in the business of having to, like, design their backyard for them. You know, that's actually written out as to, in a VMU, this is what the buffer could be or whatever. Give them alternatives.
To a certain extent, less subjective standards makes Lucas's and Maura's job easier, too.
And our job.
And their job. And ours, too.
And applicant's job.
Okay. So where do you want to go with this? My, my inclination would be to say, let's ask the staff to come back with, with a resolution that would allow for an extension of the temporary use permit for a year with the suggestion that discussions continue looking at possible mitigations if there are continuing or if there are additional complaints in the future about noise or light or whatever. And by the way, on noise, I have to tell you, my oldest granddaughter, who is now a freshman, just finished her freshman year at V... just finished her freshman year at Vanderbilt University, at the age of four, made me a Christmas decoration. It was a little ball, crinkly navy blue foil over it, and little silver stars stuck on it everywhere. And she said that was because that reminded her of being in Ojai, because of the dark skies. And so that's, that's a particularly emotional thing for me. And now that it's codified in the municipal code that we all have to do that, except the people that are already there, um, I'm all in favor of that. And to the extent that you keep up with that, I applaud you. But back to the matter at hand.
So I agree with you, except I would like to see, if they can't work it out in that timeframe, then obviously they try to continue working on it. But to the extent that they could come up with some mitigation agreed-upon provisions and they, we could include them.
If we all agree that there's a problem that needs to be mitigated, that at least we will have some potential solutions.
Well, and they, maybe they would agree to them already, you know?
Maybe so.
So I, I would prefer to, because when you think about, you don't just go by what bad things could happen. You know, someone said, well, no one's gotten...
That's what you lawyers are for, is take care of what bad...
No, we go the opposite. We look for the potential problems and you try to, to prevent them.
Forstop them, yes.
Yeah. So the idea is, you know, if, if you can do something that could mitigate sound, that is actually enhancing the environment of the place, why not do that? And that's preventing something, why not, except waiting until there's a big fight over it, you know, like being run over by a car, you know, that may only happen in 10 years, but that, it might close the whole place down. So you wanna try to stop those things. That's why some of these things aren't necessarily based on anyone's been run over yet. But, so I would like to see if they could at least try to work out with Lucas and the neighbors something and bring it back to us. If they can't, then we can still extend it and they can continue working on it. But it would be nice to have some of that resolved because that would maybe take away any tensions with neighbors and so forth.
Come back in a year?
No, no, I'm saying come back, well, in a month or whatever it takes to work it out with Lucas. And, uh, we don't, we're not denying them now, so they continue. And then in a month, they come back, if they have something, we add it to the, the conditions for the year, but we're still gonna give them a year. That would be my preference.
And ask them to come back in three months and talk about potential mitigations to potential problems?
I would say actual mitigations, if they can come up with them, um, rather than potential ones. So they agree to paint the sidewalk, that's a pretty simple thing to do. If they want to put up a trellis, I mean, we hired people to do landscaping in our yard, you can do that in a week. Uh, so all these things are things that could be done fairly quickly, putting up a sign to be quiet. I mean, just, you know, they can come up whatever they think is best and with Lucas and the neighbors, but I think, why not come back with, to us, say, in a month with what they've agreed to, to be?
Let's, let's see, because we've got a bunch of this stuff coming. Let's see what time, what kind of time staff has. And also, I have the question, if we continue this case in some fashion, what are the rules they have to live by? The ones that they have right now? Okay, okay. So, so for the applicants, it won't change until we have another meeting?
Yeah, and there's, there's a couple of different ways that this could be, or we could approach this, uh, that this commission could approach this. One is to pause it, figure out solutions. The other would be to continue it, meaning it, it remains as-is while we figure out solutions.
What is, what is pausing?
Pausing meaning the outdoor...
That means they can't use it anymore.
Correct. Because June 3rd of this year was when all the other, um, temporary outdoor dining areas were to be, they're basically the red carpets to be rolled up. And what we have is the remaining three, this one included, um, that are looking to have it on a permanent basis.
And we're, and so we're, we're gonna see the other two or three over the next couple of months?
You're gonna see the other two at the next meeting.
At the next meeting, okay.
Right.
So maybe if we said something like...
I'd say continue.
Continue it till the 1st of July of next year.
But I'd, well, I'd like to continue it, give them whatever time Lucas think he needs to work something out, and then it comes back to us. And then we, if we needed to make that temporary for a year.
Or permanent or whatever.
Or permanent. We could decide at that point. But to wait a whole year and not get anything resolved, that seems like that's the potential for conflict to arise without having resolved it.
Now, when we're talking about working, working it out, I think we've got to be specific about what those pieces to that puzzle are. Because when I'm meeting with, um, the applicants here, and I'm meeting with whatever residents are interested in meeting, that, that's not gonna be something that happens within a week.
No.
Coordinating that is, is gonna take some, some effort. I mean, even, even one of the businesses that just decided not to move forward with their outdoor dining, that was a three-months process, just to get everybody in the room, to have that conversation.
Is three months enough time?
In that case, it was three months. Three months is probably a reasonable amount of time to, to get everybody's schedules coordinated, to kinda talk through some of those issues. But I think it's important that we identify what those concerns are and that they are agreed upon by, by the commission.
So I think the buffering of some sort, whether it's, uh, trees or whatever would be one.
I'd suggest, sorry for this part, if there's discussion about what items would potentially be included in a, in direction to staff, and then maybe a voice vote or something like that, just to make sure that, uh, the commission is on the same page. If this is the route, the commission decides to go.
Yeah, okay.
May I suggest that we consider passing something tonight, which hits pause for these applicants and the other two that are in the pipeline. And that there's a 90-day period for them to meet with our staff, and the staff comes back and makes their recommendation.
May I?
Because, by the, by the way, I think...
90-day armistice? You can't pause, you gotta continue.
What Lucas said was a pause takes the garden, say, the garden area away. I meant, I meant not pause, I meant to continue. Because this is the peak of their season, you know? They've got sunlight, it goes away, you know?
And you can't shut down a business for a month or two and then expect it to be revived. That's just not...
I guess what I'm saying is that, just have everything, so that today is moved 90 days out, and during that period of time, Lucas develops a, an approach with each one to the extent he can, and comes back and makes a presentation to us about each one of the, the issues that are facing us and a recommendation. And, uh, and then we, we deal with it at that time. Does that, does that help you?
What I heard earlier and, and a little bit now, I think, was the desire to have uniform, um, regulations.
Uniform treatment of all the businesses, of course, yes.
Right. So I, I think some...
Within their zones, obviously.
But the issues may be different. For instance, here, it's painting stripes across a parking lot and putting some illumination on the walkway.
Well, isn't Bonnello's one of them that has an outdoor?
Let's only talk about the, what's in front of the, uh...
They're not even anywhere near the kind of situation.
I'd say let's just focus on, on what's, yeah, let's focus on what's in front of us, what's in front of the commission tonight. Um, if there is a desire to continue things that are potentially coming down the pipeline, dealing with similar issues, um, one of the things I'm, I'm hearing on in a potential motion is that, um, there's a need for the community development director to establish these uniform regulations, even though each case is individualized. But that would be the need for the continuance tonight and for potentially other sites.
Well, and I, I think, I think that the uni, the, the regulations are uniform at the moment, but I'm not sure the commission's happy with them where they are.
I, I'm a little nervous about, quote, "uniform regulations" because that's a much bigger project. I, and each one of these is unique. I'm more concerned that each one of these unique businesses are dealt with in terms of the, of the issues that they raise, and that, uh, if there's a need to work with neighbors or work with other businesses, that that be done. But it seems like, we haven't even heard those other ones yet. I prefer to just deal with this one now, give them three months to work things out and come back.
If, if the issues are similar, and Lucas probably knows what all those issues are at this point, then they could be resolved in a way that was uniform. To the degree that they are individual issues, like painting a sidewalk onto your, um, parking lot, fine, that's an individual situation. But what I would like to see is everybody treated equally. I, I, I think it's a nightmare to have, uh, other, um, people coming before us and we treat them somehow differently. I, that's just not okay.
That's not what the government should be doing.
That's true.
So just as staff, um...
We can keep it to, to uniform treatment under a broad set of guidelines, understanding that there will be individual differences because of the environment that each business is in. I think we could live, we could all live with that. I'm sorry, you were going to say something, Maura?
I was just going to say that, um, these are all unique situations and these are discretionary permit requests. And so...
That's why we're here.
We can't help but treat them differently. They do have the same requirement of having to get a conditional use permit, um, or, um, or a temporary use permit, whatever the case may be. Um, but again, they're, they're all unique situations and to put off, to put the other two off, does, it doesn't make sense in these particular situations.
No, we should hear them and decide what we want to do with them, yeah.
They all have unique situations and they wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to put, uh, guidelines that are gonna comply with all three, or that would be appropriate for all three.
Right.
Okay.
So we're back to...
Just to, just to add to that, each of the 16 that, that received these temporary use permits for the outdoor dining were unique. They really were. Even the 21 that I, I mean, when we were looking at the 21, they were all unique. Unique situations, I mean, the COVID's a unique situation in its own right, right? Trying to find solutions to something that you're just, you're, you're chasing your tail essentially, right? So the 16 are unique. Could you come up with some sort of general standards? I, I question whether or not that's even possible, given the three that we're, that we're working through right now.
I think, I think, I think the situation maybe that we're trying to work our way to is not to treat different cases so differently that a new case comes along and says, well, you let them do it, why can't I do it? Um, but I think you can work that.
So do you need a, uh, because your attorney suggested that we needed it. I, um...
We need direction to staff.
A motion to give them, tell them what issues that they need to work on? Is that, you want us to spell that out?
An agreement with the majority.
Okay. Um, well, I will make a motion just to try to get us started.
Great.
If that's okay. Um, so I would like to, to make a motion that we continue these permits for three months.
Say the second, second planning commission meeting in October. So we have a date certain. If you don't continue to a date certain...
Okay, that's, that's good.
There's all more paperwork to do.
And that during that time period, the staff, the applicants, the neighbors, should all be consulted and see if they can come back with, um, some, some agreement on any type of, um, additions to their, to their permit that would deal with, uh, buffering, would deal with, uh...
Shall, shall we say pedestrian safety?
Pedestri, yeah. Pedestrian safety and, uh, I don't know how we describe it, but informing the applicant, I mean, the, the patrons, that this is a quiet zone. Some kind of identification of this is a quiet zone. Those seem specific.
If it is.
Well, they claim it is on all the letters we got.
No, with this one, but for another one, it could be...
No, I'm just, I'm just dealing with this one.
That's, that's instructions to staff to come back on this case.
So some kind of notification to customers that this is a quiet zone, some kind of buffer, and some kind of dealing with the, uh, the trans, transversing the parking lot in a safe way. Does that seem to cover what we've been? Is there anything else?
I think that's generally what we talked about.
I think so. The, the lights and the sound are covered.
Is that sufficient to get conversation started?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my motion.
That's your motion?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion on that? Then Sheri, let's, uh...
Was, was there no date specific then?
Um, yes, the second, I think.
Second meeting in October.
The second planning commission meeting in October. I don't remember the date specifically, but that's three months away.
Okay, October 19th. Quillacy?
19th, yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes. Voila!
Go and do good things.
Definitely.
Love, spread the love.
Thank you.
I'm a little bit nervous for, uh, for the children that can't read the sign, you know?
Well, parents are there. You don't let children just come and patronize it by themselves, do you?
Adults only.
That's a different problem.
You might could teach reading while you're doing this.
Well, all right. Thank you.
I appreciate the amount of time you took to work this through.
Absolutely. It's all past our bedtime.
I know. The town's closed, you can't go out for a drink.
Amplified entertainment is not part of your current permit.
Not this, correct. And you will, we will deal with that in our separate part of our application, to see you before then. Yes. Thank you.
Five minutes. Catch your breath.
So can everybody please turn off their mic?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay, and let's all go mics live. We're back in session and we're moving to item five, priorities of planning commission and community development department. Lucas?
Yes, thank you. So I wanted to update this commission that on July 12th, sorry, trying to remember the date here. The formula business moratorium was continued and that was continued for another 10 months, 15 days, something like that. That is the last continuance that we can do for moratorium of this nature. We've got to figure something out. So I will, I'll be meeting with the business owners as well as the chamber to try to come up with with some guidelines, some or I guess an ordinance essentially to a certain degree, maybe even, maybe even a term sheet. We're looking at different strategies to address.
I think a term sheet would probably be the best for us to consider. Then we can ask you to come back two weeks later or whatever time it takes to write the ordinance.
Right.
What is the deadline you just said?
It's 10, but so basically it's 10 months and 15 days from from that date. So it'd be, I think August 3rd was the date in which the moratorium was set to expire, unless it was, unless it was continued. So on July 12th, that happened.
The way these, the way these moratoria go, you can, you can on an emergency basis get a 45 day moratorium. Then you can do 10 months and 15 days to get it to a year. And then I think you have to go back to the 45 days.
Yeah, there is no more extensions that are out. Yeah, there you.
You can extend it to a total of two years.
Two years. So it's 10 months and 15 days from.
July 12th.
Yeah, for all, yes, from July 12th, because that's the decision date.
End of May, yeah.
So we should try to re-address this a couple of months in advance, not wait till last.
At least.
Yeah, the unfortunate thing is, is when I had identified that we had a year, I think everybody was like, oh, thank goodness, it's a year. Uh, here we are. But the reality is, is that given COVID and the situations that we've been dealing with, business owners haven't been worried about formula business. They've been worried about other things. I mean, you saw that tonight.
They've been worried about staying alive, not, not the competition, just overall survival.
There's, and to be, to be fair, the community, business community is coming out to try to figure out some solutions and re-carving retail out is one of the solutions that we're looking at. So we'll see what that.
We've, we've discussed that here, so.
Right.
Carving retail out as opposed to from restaurants is.
Yep. And having its own, yeah, having its own standards.
Yeah, basically, the the current formula business ordinance deals with fast food restaurants.
Well, not fast food, it covers all. It isn't over, I just, I hate assuming that it's just restaurants when it's more than that. But as a broad perspective, it covers really all of those uses. And that's, I think to the point there is from a, from a retail standpoint, there's some concerns. And that business community at this point has started talking about that.
So can I raise two things, I may ask maybe more? One, it seems like.
Mics off, the mics off.
Oh, sorry.
One, it seems like we're, when we're talking about tourism, tourism businesses wanting to be a unique community, you know, not have, go down and see national change or something.
Jersey mics.
Jersey mic, okay. That we ought to have a boundary of where that would be. It seems, doesn't seem relevant for the why to be having these kinds of standards.
Boundary is the city limits.
I realize that, but it just seems like, what would happen if if Vons closed? You wouldn't be able to get a supermarket in there. What happened if True Value closed? Or or McDonald's, what are that, that, I can't think of the name of it.
Not McDonald's.
Ben Franklin closed.
Right.
I don't see the relevance of this ordinance in the same way to those places, or maybe it should be a different one to downtown. I mean, we just have to cross our fingers and hope none of those businesses ever close.
Well, maybe as we go through the formula business thing, we need to add to the list of exemptions. Because right now it's gas stations, real estate and financial services, I think.
Yeah, the, I, I know we've had conversations that if you read the ordinance, it doesn't specify any of those as exempt. We just understand them to be exempt. It doesn't specifically call them out, I know. I've, I've looked at this.
I've got to go read that again.
You got to read it again.
So it seems like.
Here's, here's, here's where the exemption can apply. When you're taking a use and you're identifying that it's the same use, that's where the exemption can apply.
What do you mean by that?
Gas station is is a good example of that, where you're taking a brand of gas station, you're changing it to another brand. Our code actually allows for that specifically.
So we can, we have national brand, the gas stations, otherwise you wouldn't have any gas stations.
Absolutely, you've got, yeah, you have. We have, we have Ojai Gas.
It used to be Shell. And Shell that used to be.
Valero and Shell, right.
And Banks is another example.
Banks is another example.
Financial services in general.
Financial services.
And I think grocery stores seems like, and maybe even hardware stores.
Uh, those are the conversation pieces. Um, I think there's some, there's some concerns there. So anyway, I think the exemption piece, calling that out specifically to a point raised by one of the residents here earlier, making it very straightforward and very simple to understand, absolutely.
Yeah.
In terms of of staff muddling through what may or may not be something, I mean, we're spinning our heads.
You've got enough work to do. You don't have to go muddle through that many subjective decisions.
Yeah, I agree. I agree, it's a minefield to a certain degree. So that's, that's formula business. I wanted to highlight that because that's the most recent thing that just happened with council. Now, I will have to admit, it didn't garner a whole lot of discussion because the main show for that meeting was not formula business. It had another bigger piece to the puzzle.
God, what was, what was that?
I don't want to mention it because we'll talk, we can, we can have a discussion about it during general, not general plan, but staff reports and city or planning commission reports.
On the general plan, that land use and transportation workshop is August 2nd.
It is August 2nd, it's a Tuesday from 5:30 to 7:30. Um, I think it's worth mentioning as a plug. We've sent off to the constant contact, which, Sherry, how many people do we have on constant contact for general plan, maybe 60, 70 people? Oh, is it more than that now? Okay, good. So we got a good plug going out there right now. We may do something in in the Ojai Valley paper, local paper as well, to get, to get the word out. We've noticed that when we, when we do a combination of all these, these people, although, hold on a second. Yeah, yeah, we can talk about it because we have the general plan stuff here as well. When, when we combine all three of those or all four of those points, there seems to be a lot more. Am I, I'm not going, okay. There seems to be a lot more interest. Case in point, when we did the last workshop back in March of 2021, we did a combination of the three of those where we were getting not only the constant contact and obviously the commissions involved, but posting it on social media and other forums ended up getting basically over 100 people involved, which was.
Add issues, you'll add segments of the population that come together.
Right. And Kent Hall hopefully is going to hold all of us.
That holds what, about 100 people?
Yeah, that's kind of what we're looking at.
Um, but you got extra rooms there, you could spread out a little bit, I guess.
Yes.
And and staff hopes that all the planning commissioners will be there?
Yes, we were short on planning commissioners last time, I'll have to admit. So I look forward to seeing all of your bright shiny faces.
I was thinking about going to New Zealand at that time. I have to cancel that.
Better pass, postpone that. So, okay, yeah, I, I wanted to put that plug in because I think it's an important piece. It was moved from July 28th to August, August 2nd, so.
What is this Kent, is it Kent Hall?
Kent Hall.
What is that?
Literally stone's throw away over here.
It used to be help of Ojai. It was help of, okay.
Yep.
So.
We have reactivated that for the public.
Trying to get the city council there, I assume.
We're trying to get everybody there.
What about members of the MAC? Even, even though they're not in the city, transportation overlaps.
Uh, members of the MAC are certainly aware of this. I would hope they would be aware of this.
Well, I wasn't at the last meeting because I had grandchildren here, so I wasn't able to announce it.
People from outside the city limits, which is all of the MAC, are always welcome to come to the meetings.
Um, the only other update would be maybe Title 10 update. I know Quillisi and I have been working on fine tuning what this body, although I'm looking at this body and I'm thinking none of you are on the commission when we were going through Title 10 through in terms of the errata.
To make it simpler is that all of the pieces that we have to decide to put together or not put together in a consolidated recommendation to the city council, every individual piece has already been approved by a planning commission body for recommendation to the city council.
Yeah.
Can we see?
We, we need to see all that so we can have.
I, I don't know if it needs to come back again, but it certainly could.
Well, you can't very well have serial recommendations to a city council when it's got to be the board that is in existence at the time. Because you learn things as you're going.
I don't know.
It's like constitution. I'm not comfortable that some other board is recommending something that we don't get a chance to review.
This is really more errata than it is anything else. And I don't think that there is a, a timestamp on when items that have been brought forward by a planning commission as a recommendation to the city.
What do you mean?
Fixing all the bad lines.
Fixing all the inconsistencies.
Okay, I'm more concerned with the substance, substance of the subjective standards.
We called that a deeper dive is what we refer to it as.
That's what I think we need.
There's still a long list of those pieces of the code that we have to bring back and have the commission discuss.
But the longer we delay that, the more we're subjecting ourselves to being criticized for making subjective decisions. And it also violates.
But we're not.
Wait a minute, let me finish. It also violates the Housing Accountability Act. The act says you cannot review any housing, doesn't even have to be affordable, any residential units with subjective standards. Our design review is all subjective. Technically, the county had to throw theirs out. I don't think we could even, under the Design Accountability, you couldn't deny anybody or reduce the amount of units using those standards. That would be illegal. And so it seems crazy to me since we're pushing for more housing and we're fortunate we don't have a denial, well, actually, the county, town did have a sort of semi-denial. But, you know, the whole Becker Development Agreement is housing, you know? And we reviewed it with subjective design guidance. We didn't turn it down, fortunately, but if we had.
A third of it is new construction. Well, no, not that much of it.
Yeah, but that's all design review. And that is technically cannot be subjective standards.
I think we got a little far afield, so just pull it back to more general.
We're getting, we're kind of getting in the weeds on one specific issue.
Address that issue.
Through Title 10 is what you're saying. Right, and that's fine, that, that way we're, we're hitting the square.
Title 10, yes, that's, that's what I'm talking about, addressing that, those subjective standards that we're using now, which I don't think is, certainly with housing, it's not legal.
Exercise, you might take on.
I'd be happy to work with people on it.
Would be to, as you read Title 10, make a note of those paragraphs, those section numbers that you think need work. Because we have been through that process and there's still a lot of them that we haven't come to. We've, we've been doing things like there's a reference to a piece of the state code that doesn't exist or to the wrong piece of state code or to the wrong, a, a reference to the wrong place in the municipal code or internally inconsistent pieces of the municipal code.
Yeah, well, I'd be happy to.
That's the low hanging fruit that we would like to get fixed.
Yeah.
And go from there.
But the, the, I'm thinking of things more things like fine architecture or monotonous architecture or compatibility of landscape to the, that's compatible with the design of the, of the building. I mean, those are ridiculously subjective terms. If we have something.
And yet we are, we also have the responsibility of the architectural review board here.
That's true, but we have to, when you're dealing with residence, residential, they have to be objective standards. We have to somehow come up with objective ways of addressing those issues.
Okay, I look.
That's what the law requires.
I look forward to you picking those paragraphs that you think we need to work on first.
Okay, I'd be happy to.
Love to have another set of eyes on that.
Yep. I can already think of the, the article where, where you should be focusing on.
Could you just tell us?
It's the DRP section, it's, it's Article 20. That's really where we should be focusing. There's a lot of objective standards that are, that are living within.
I was reading it, I read the whole thing.
The land use tables, many of the entries in the land use tables are open to interpretation, let's say.
Yeah. So the errata that, so I think Bennett, was it you that was, you were saying, well, what does errata mean? Or no, you asked that.
I knew what it was. Jeffrey didn't know what it means.
I went to Mickey Mouse College, we didn't have that big word.
I don't mean to point fingers here. Look, I mean, the errata is just fixing it, the inconsistencies that, we were looking for the low, low hanging fruit. When we first, when we were starting to get into deliberations of, of going deeper and doing a deeper dive or going down a rabbit hole, I was immediately saying, whoa, hold on a second. You're going down something, let's just, let's do the clean sweep of everything first and then come in and do that deeper, deeper dive.
May I say something about this?
There is.
Example of errata, what does buffering mean? I know what it means chemically, but that's another issue. It's kind of subjective, but that would be a good one to deal with.
Yeah, well, obviously.
Yeah.
One way to do that, obviously, is design guidelines that have a little more black and white and then people can make suggestions for modifying from them, but, you know.
It, it would be good to figure out buffering before the bowling alley situation comes back to us because they do have a restaurant next to residential.
And outdoor dining, yeah. Yeah, that was, that was pretty clear, I mean, you, you saw what the, oh, man, hold on. We're going down, we're talking about things that.
Different rabbit holes.
Right, different rabbit hole, not a part of this. So if we want, we can move on to, to, um, the next item.
Okay. So those are the only two we're focusing on of the, of these ones here?
Well, the, I guess the other one, um, it keeps coming up. I think every single meeting we've had for the last four months, somehow parking comes up. Um, and I, I will admit, when this body met, um, in a joint meeting with council, it was almost a year ago now that I'm thinking about it, but it didn't seem like that was that long ago that we were in a V shape and meeting and talking, that parking was brought up. Oh yeah, figure it out, go fi- planning commission, you go figure it out. And then since then, we now have council that's, that's gone in and they've got an ad hoc.
Another ad hoc committee that'll come back and say-
So the question is, is now-
The answer, but take a look at it and see if you like it.
Yep.
I just think that's a formula for disaster personally. We just saw what happened with the, uh, development agreement, how people reacted to it.
Well.
Because people are suspicious when two people go behind closed doors and no one else is involved in the process. Parking is relevant to everybody. I mean, I've made this complaint to the city council, so I'm not saying anything. I know, I'm not saying I haven't, something I've said to all of them, that that should be a public discussion.
Yeah. So anyway, my thought is with the parking that we, we pause it, let that play out and then-
Yeah.
And then we'll pick up, yeah, we'll pick up wherever they, they left, they leave off.
Yeah. Fire suppression mitigation is something that I remain very interested in. And I'm happy to go back to Casitas and the fire department and talk to them and give us a list of facts to work with. But I have, I have done some of that already. I'm, I'm worried, you know, we have, we have rules here about building separation. That's because you don't want your neighbor's garage to catch your garage on fire kind of thing, okay? But we also have state laws and maybe local laws, I, I don't know for sure, that's part of the problem. But NFPA, the National Fire Prevention Association, has a document called NFPA one that sets standards which may or may not be adopted by our city council. It's not entirely clear to me. That says, depending on the kind of structure you have and the size of structure you have, this is how much water, pressure, water flow and time, this is what you need to put out a fire potentially. And, and for example, it's a thousand gallons a minute for an hour or two hours or something like that. Casitas won't certify that anywhere in town. So new buildings that come in right now by NFPA one, which has at least been adopted by the Ventura County Fire Protection District, not necessarily by the city council. I'm not entirely clear on that. If you don't have that kind of water flow, then you have to put sprinklers in.
So that was that dispute that just went before the city council. I don't know what happened with it because that meeting was so crazy.
It was continued, that, that item was continued.
It was what?
It was continued.
Continued, well, anyway, that was a dispute between the building inspection board and I guess the Ventura County, what is it, fire district?
Fire chief.
That was technically a different issue.
But it was about sprinklers and an ADU.
It was definitely about sprinklers, yes.
Well, I think it's be, I don't know what the best strategy, but we ought to have built into our code some kind of reasonable fire protection. The other thing that I've noticed, just because I canvassed the whole community, was that, uh, we have houses that are amongst vegetation right on the edge of our mountains. And if one of those caught on fire, the whole town could catch on fire.
Well.
And there doesn't seem to be any regulation about these people being surrounded by-
Fuel management, there are rules about fuel management already, whether they're sufficient or not.
I was just looking at it, it looked like that would be so easy to catch up in those, some of those places I looked at.
Yeah, I, look, from a broad perspective, the safety element is probably your first line of defense from that standard. And that's the reason why it was, it was merged with fuel management. And, um, I encourage you to re- review our safety element. Also understand that CalFire, um, will be looking very closely at our safety element as well. So I, I think it's from a broad perspective, just think about that. I know we got into the weeds on a couple of things, but pulling it back and just kind of thinking big picture, that's kind of what this, this is looking to.
So is CalFire and some of these other organizations gonna give us recommendations?
Absolutely. I, I mean, I'm in constant contact with, although I haven't been in contact with them for like six months, but uh, irregularly I've been getting updates from them because they certainly want to see any sort of, of revisions that come forward in a draft form regarding our safety element.
CalFire is the state level organization.
Yep.
And you've got the Ventura County Fire Protection District. And you've got the city council deciding how much of that is going to apply within the city.
And very often our streets turn into county streets as they get up into the hills.
So that we ought to be, uh-
Makes an integrated approach the only way to do it.
Yeah. And there's policy, I think, through the general, through the general plan and more specifically through the safety element.
So are you gonna recommend, so we already have a fire, safety in?
We already have an existing safety.
Yeah, I know, we have one in there. Are you gonna recommend from these other sources some revisions? Is that what?
You'll see, you'll likely see a redlined version of the policies, yes.
Okay, okay. Because I'm not, I'm not an expert in this and I couldn't make-
No, that's why we, we rely on other, other experts to provide us guidance.
Because you have the city council which provides us with more, um, in terms of things to look at and things to work on.
Well, they're gone for a month at least.
But, but, um, but I, there's one which we've talked about several times in se- in the context of, of several projects, and that is sound hyphen noise.
Hmm.
Um, and, uh, I think we'd all like this to be a quieter, um, place, a more serene place. Um, and when, when we talk about sitting at one of these outdoor restaurants and trying to talk to somebody and, you know, the sound of-
That's, that's not in Title X, that's in Title four or seven or-
Uh, it's Title four, or more, it's Title five, I'm sorry. So in terms of noise, if we're still talking about the general plan, the noise element itself is not being revised. It's, it's like a lipstick and makeup type of approach where it's consistency with the rest of the elements. I think that's probably the best way to describe that. Not an overhaul like what you're getting with the land use element, the transportation element, the safety element,
Housing.
Housing element, and what's the last one, environmental justice. All five of those
Right.
are, are receiving real heavy, um, revisions. Pause with that. I don't know that I want to say real heavy revisions. They're taking, they're having a closer look at each of those elements.
Scrutiny.
Yes.
Not necessarily-
Not necessary revisions.
The environmental part is obviously not gonna be a separate element. It's supposed to be weaved into the other stuff.
Yep.
But it uses environmental justice, I guess is the term. That's separate from any kind of climate mitigation and resilience kind of thing.
It is.
Do we have that in our, in our-
Climate resiliency?
Element on those?
No.
Because that seems like such a, um, top of mind issue with so many of our residents.
Mm-hmm.
It seems strange that we would not have a-
It's not a part, it's not a part of what the state says is supposed to be an element of your general-
Oh, they have it as one, a element that you can add. If you look at the whole guidelines, they have a separate one on climate mitigation and resilience. It's part of the, if you go look at the guidelines, there's one on that. It's not required element.
Have it if you want it, yeah.
It's not a required element. It was certainly discussed by council when, when we went through the, um, we went through the negotiations to enter into contract with who we have as a consultant right now, which is Ramina.
We don't have a contract, so they couldn't do the technical work.
They couldn't do the technical work without actually going back to council and saying, look, it's gonna be X dollars to do that.
It's, the way the county did it, they didn't have it to be a separate element. They did it like the environmental justice and they had like a, I don't know, a study, and then they had recommendations and then they weaved them into the various sections of the land use plan, but I don't know, we don't want to create more work, but it just seems like that's such a, um, it's brought up all the time, even during, you know, land use issues all the time by people.
Absolutely.
It seems to be a really important, uh, value of our community. So I, I find it hard that we wouldn't want to address that.
There was a lot of discussion on it.
Maybe we need to go to the city council to discuss that or individually.
I would-
Not as a planning commission.
Are you, are you, you want this thing to run every week, twice a week? All night?
Okay. Let's go on to item six. Future agenda items.
So we've got two items, Bonnylou's and Nochiola. Um, both of those are the temporary use permit variety for the outdoor dining. So those are both ready to move forward. We've got all the necessary information. We've had the conversations. We've done the kind of deeper dive with these, these two businesses and, um, and we'll be bringing something forward for this, for this body. Uh, moving forward to August seventeenth, um, that's where we'll see two fourteen Bryant Street Lot Line Adjustment. At this point, I haven't seen any of the details on it yet. We're still working through that, but it was continued date specific, so hopefully we get there by then.
Well, if we need to, we can continue it to another specific date.
We do, well, here's the situation. If we do end up needing additional time, when I say we, I mean the applicant, um, I would be, I would be probably recommending that we just continue it off calendar so they can work those, those details out because if they're not getting it to me in short order for us to get before this body, then, um, it's up to them on how quickly they want to move. I can only-
Another ten days from now, they gotta give you something.
Yeah, with these applicants, it's kind of on their, it's on their dime, it's on their time, right? So it really just-
Okay.
It's, it's an application that they're wanting to do. It's not an application that we're forcing them to do. So. And then the second one is the Gables. Um, I have all the information for us to, to have a concept review on that, so. That will be an interesting meeting to say the least, as a concept.
And is it a subjective, uh, standard issue?
Um, yeah, it does to a certain degree.
It's a concept review, so they're not looking for a decision.
There's no, yeah, there's no decision.
And Ms. Murphy will have to, uh, step back out through that door.
That's true. You're stone's throw away across the street, right? Yeah. Yep.
She's been thinking about throwing stones, I think.
You have no point of view about this.
Now, is it a rule, of course, I don't live in the town, so never apply to me, but is it a rule that, um, can somebody who is recused still get up there and speak on the matter?
You're still a citizen.
I just asked the question.
Yes, and we've just allowed commissioners, council members to speak on how it affects them personally, um, when they live within the, the, why they're recused. So the radius usually is the issue.
Sherri always gave each of us a, a one sheet that said, here's your house and here's a five hundred foot circle around your property. It's not a circle. If you have a rectangular property, it's got curves on the corners. But you can see, you can see what other parcels you have to recuse yourself from considering if you live in the city.
Or if you own property in the city?
Or if you, well, yeah, if you own property.
Doesn't have to be resi- residency.
You don't have to live in the city, no.
Right. I guess that's right, isn't it? You-
Right, there are other issues for you can be conflicted out or, you know, have to accuse yourself.
You own half of a business or something.
Fine, right. Um, I don't want to go to too many of these. Usually, at the beginning, uh, we send you guys a handbook and, you know, kind of dealing with these issues and if you guys can keep the, our office and Lucas appraised or prized.
Okay, well, we've got a couple of interesting meetings coming in August then.
Yes, we do. And, and, and even, I mean, we're already looking at September as well as potential items that are gonna be ready by then, so. Uh, I would, I will say this. I am encouraged to see that some of this log jam regarding current projects is loosened. However, our advanced projects, advanced planning projects or those long-term projects, you just saw that list. There's other items that aren't even on that list that are advanced planning projects. We're bringing someone on that's gonna be working part-time, about thirty-two, thirty, thirty, thirty-two hours a week. Super excited. They're gonna hit the ground running and you'll be seeing some of those projects come forward.
Is, is your office funded by fees? So the volume of stuff that we're doing is generating the fees-
Correct.
That allows you to bring on someone?
Correct.
Okay.
They can start paying us some money.
That chance.
Yep.
Okay.
And all the pending stuff is still trying to pull complete applications together?
Yeah, I know that at one point, um, and I think it came along during one of the items, contentious items that we had uh, several months back, and that is, um, the director's exemption process of minor projects. If this body is interested in having-
I thought we had been through that.
We had.
And finished it, and you've got new standard language that goes with all your DEs.
Yes, and that's what, that's what this body sees anytime a director's exemption comes forward. It's a pretty, it's a pretty standard, straightforward process versus what it was before that.
Yeah, I do not see a need to review that anymore.
Okay. Because I'm thinking about taking it off, but I did-
So it's, where is that exist in our code or does it exist?
The director's exemption is, uh, under Article, uh, twenty. And born from that is a policy, and that's the policy that, that was referenced here, which is six point four.
Find Policy six dash, six point four.
Six point four is, anytime that we post a direct-
On the city website.
Yes, anytime that we post a director's exemption and you click on that to take a look at the plans, the first piece of that email is clicking on the hyperlink that takes you to that webpage. That webpage also has the policy spelled out.
Um, so we have a whole bunch of policies to be on the code that are listed there?
No, only this, this specific policy.
This is the only policy we have.
Only the, only the policy that applies to the director, yeah, there's lots of policies. Only this policy that, that applies to director's exemptions, the process, procedures.
On planning issues that would be listed there?
No, not on that webpage.
But are there other policies at all or?
Yeah, I mean, a six point four gives you a pretty good understanding that there's more than just one policy. Yeah, so it's on our city's website. There's a document center.
It says policies and then it's under planning, something like that?
There's the design guidelines and all the policies, yeah.
Right.
There's a link to all of them.
Well, it'd be nice to know what they are because, you know, even though we have a code, a policy may apply and if I don't know what it is, how can I argue with you?
It's one, one more thing or many more things to read, yes.
Yeah, it's a deeper dive. Uh, so yeah, that one I, I was considering taking off, but I wanted to, to just, um, kind of get your, your thoughts, food for thought.
I think it's been processed and, and, uh, the planning commissioners that were having issues with it at the time that we began this, this review process, they're no longer on the commission, but that doesn't matter. I, it's my impression that we solved all of the issues to their satisfaction before they departed.
Yeah.
If all the ones that had a problem got solved, I guess it's probably a good policy.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think it was providing clarity within the document itself because it was unclear. I mean, there were some things that Sherri and I went in and fixed, for sure.
When, when people were caught unawares and not able to do things they wanted to do because they didn't realize what the requirements were, those kinds of things, it's been clarified.
Yeah.
So when you did, you just did a director's exemption on this one?
Yep.
You list the-
You need to read those front to back. They're really very interesting.
So was the policy listed here for us?
Say that again?
Was the policy provided for this?
Yeah, so when I, when I sent out the email, the email goes to, and it's blind CCed to this, to this, this body as well as city council. Um, the policy is identified as a hyperlink, so you just click on that and it'll take you directly to the, to the policy. Additionally, the director's exemption in terms of that decision is then provided- Additionally, the director's exemption in terms of that decision is then provided as a hyperlink. You click on that and you can go directly to the, to the report. There's a host, there's a host of policies. So.
And Lucas would appreciate hearing from you once you have read the director's exemption. To, just to say to him, I approve or I disapprove, I'm going to appeal it, or I'm going to ask that it be brought back to the planning commission for review rather than leaving it as a decision at the director's level.
Right.
How much time do we have to make this appeal?
So it's slightly concerning that you're asking these questions because they're all specified within the report itself. So it makes me feel like you haven't been reading them. And I encourage you to read them because all of that information, even the appeal process, it's a 15 day appeal process, is, is spelled out there. And it's not only spelled out, it's highlighted and bold. And it's done on purpose so that if you are just glossing through it, your eye is going to immediately go to that attention for that appeal period.
I had grandchildren visit me.
I don't mean, I, yeah, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but the, all that information is provided within that document.
But by the way, I, I do think we use hyper, very effectively.
It's a credit to Sherry. Sherry has developed that system.
Sherry would want to say that.
It makes it so much easier to read the base document.
Yep. Yep.
Like you say, the paper could have linked that to me, but you knew you asked for it. And then if you don't ask for it.
Some of us are paper hounds. I like to have it.
No, it's good to have the paper in front of you rather than looking for it at the meeting.
I know, but I've got to take it out of here and then put it in another.
Oh, we do? Oh, all right. All right. Well, the last, the last element of our meeting then is to hear from our city council liaison who is the mayor.
Yes, I'm here. Hello. Thank you so much. Nice to see all of you all. Thank you for an illuminating and thoughtful meeting. It's always wonderful to see staff, community and commissioners collaborating so well. So thank you. A special shout to Sherry, Maura, Lucas, James, Tom, Beyond the Scene, and Epi, our incredible staff. Much appreciated. Just a couple of themes that resonated and were repeated. Heart of small businesses, responsible, symbiotic balance, mediation, opportunity to discuss, do the work to find common ground, whole new way to be outside, find a solution with neighbors, compatibility, monitoring, sound, compromise, flexibility, listen to majority, not just accommodate minority, quality of life, COVID is not over, children, positivity, tranquil, cool and lovely, community, we need an outdoor state space, conflict resolution, safe space for meetings, love is greater than everything and discussion. So thank you so much because really this is what we're all about here in Ojai, working together and working for the common good and finding the best solutions for everyone. So I really appreciate all the work that everyone's doing. And just, you brought up the disaster council and the fire evacuation plan. So there's, there'll be a meeting August 2nd, same day as the general plan meeting to go over the evacuation plan with all the stakeholders. So that's really exciting. Move forward, so.
Be interesting to see that. Is that also at Kent Hall and is it earlier in the day?
It's at 10 a.m. I'll confirm the location. It'll, it'll be online. So thank you. And thank you, Chair Quillis, for running the meeting and really grateful to everyone.
Thank you. That's the, the evacuation plans, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay. Ah, yes. Okay. Hearing no other business before the commission at 9:56, 55, I declare us adjourned. Thank you all very much.